The meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you. I'll call the March 22, 2022, meeting of the Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission, open into order. At the outset, for any members of the public who are here on the Fairfield University matter, which is, let's get this right, 1073 North Benson Road, which was in the public hearing section of our meeting, that application has been withdrawn without prejudice. That will not be going forward this evening. I'll make another announcement later in case anybody else comes on. But starting off, we also have, I understand Commissioner Harrison is not in attendance, so Commissioner Kit will be sitting in for Commissioner Harrison. Is that, that's correct, Mr. Went?
It's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kit. And first item, Bills and Communications Meeting Minutes from the March 8 meeting. May I have a motion on this item? I think I saw Commissioner Francis, you're on mute, though, is that move to approve? I, I think I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Francis.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Breman. Commissioner Francis, anything? In your review? You're still on mute, Commissioner Francis.
I read them and saw no errors.
Thank you. Commissioner Breman? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, my connection is unstable, I'm gonna log out and log back in again.
Have a quick minute. Well, maybe not a quick minute. Any other members of the commission, anything in your review of the minutes? For Commissioner Breman? Can you hear us, Commissioner Breman, anything from the minutes?
No, sorry.
That's okay. So we'll put it to a vote, are you all set with Commissioner Breman? Okay. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I believe I see seven, any objections? Passes unanimously. Next items for the new applications for recommendation to public hearing, we have 236 Commerce Drive Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan Application, Frank Pepe's Development Co. LLC, change to a new one-story building for takeout service in the design industrial.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, this application is for a freestanding building adjacent to Pepe's on Commerce Drive to another pizza oven to help accommodate their takeout trades, so they can have their takeout trades separated from their current dining establishment, it is a new structure, does require public hearing.
May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun? Move to public hearing?
Second.
Thank you, I assume Commissioner Braun stopped mute, but I assume that's a move, motion for public hearing? I think that's a yes. Second from Commissioner Francis. Last, Commissioner Breman again. Commissioner Breman, we lost your video. And you're on mute.
Going off video for a moment, I'll be on, I'll continue to be on the meeting, but I'm gonna try to move to another location where I can get a better signal.
Okay. All those in, just keep, you'll lose video, but audio, fine. All those, sorry, I lost my train of thought. All those approving the motion to public hearing, please say aye or raise your hand. Seven passes unanimously. Any objection, any opposition? Next item is 92 Center Street Special Exception Application of Southport School to utilize an existing residence for school administrative use in the R3 Zone. Mr. Went?
Mr. Chairman, this property is residential district, Southport School is an adjacent parcel, it's a private, not school. They've acquired the residence at 92 Center Street and hope to use it for their administrative offices. It is an expansion of the school use and does, is a special exception application and therefore does require public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Ford? Move to public hearing?
Yes.
Commissioner Francis, seconds?
Sure.
Any comments?
No.
Mr. Went, is this right next door?
It is, it's an adjacent parcel.
Great, okay.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Count seven, any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is 321-325 Reef Road Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan Application of Phoenix at Reef Road Corp pertaining to additions and alterations to an existing building to convert to residential use. Nine units, neighborhood design, business district. Mr. Went?
I don't have anything to add, other than what you just read, Mr. Chairman, it is an addition in a use, it does require special permit, therefore a public hearing is required.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Francis, move to public hearing? Commissioner Kit, second. Any comments?
Mr. Went, what's on this site right now?
On the site now is a two-story medical building. They're looking to take the entirety of the building and convert it to residential use with an addition to do so.
Okay, and parking lot in the back, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's an old building, I'm surprised they're not raising it. Okay, thank.
We'll hear about it, I'm sure. Put it to a vote, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Think I count seven, yes. Commissioner, any opposition? Passes unanimously. Next item is 750 Tamar Drive Special Exception Application of St. Catherine Center for Special Needs for an addition to an existing school in the R3 Zone. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, 750 Tamar Drive is the site of Holy Cross Catholic Church up by Lake Mohegan. On their campus is a school, which is the Bridgeport Dias, Diasis Special Education School. They're looking to put an addition onto that school, is a special exception use, does require a public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Breman, move to a public hearing? Second to Commissioner Francis? Any comments, questions? Put it to a vote.
Mr. Went, will the the building, when completed, be within our regulations for setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Into a vote, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Think I see seven, any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Onto old business. Zoning Regulation Amendment Application of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission to amend Section 6.0 of the zoning regulations, the accessory apartments and proposed opt-out of state mandated language. Mr. Went?
Mr. Chairman, as the item suggests, the first piece of this is a proposal to amend Section 6 of the regulations, which are accessory apartment regulations. As this commission may know, there was a there was an overhaul of these regulations done last year in 2021. In the, there are really threefold the issues before the commission with respect to this application. We are proposing to introduce two new zones for eligibility for single-family residences to have a, an attached, an accessory apartment. That would be the residents B and the resident C zones that presently prohibit accessory apartments because they are multifamily zones. What this draft proposal entails is including the B and C zones for single-family homes only. The second piece to this is in 2021, the commission provided for the ability for a detached accessory apartment in the AAA zone only, the two-acre zone. This proposal is proposing to expand that opportunity to the one-acre zone, the double-A zone, and the half-acre zone, R3 zone. In all cases, it has to be a lot that meets the minimum lot requirements. And they can't have both a detached and attached, they can only have a single accessory apartment on the property. The other third phase of the amendment package is really more administrative changes to eliminate the requirement for annual recertification. So really, the three main issues here are to consider is to add the B and C zones for single-family residences for eligibility and to expand the detached opportunity to the one-acre and the half-acre zones. And also those administrative changes, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. In the past, we've been tabling this item for the affordable, to meet with Affordable Care with the joint session we had last week. That obviously occurred. I don't know what the appetite is right now, but I'll at least call for a motion for the regulation amendments. Commissioner Braun? You're on mute.
Okay, I would like to move to separate the items from one another on the agenda, so that we can take our time with the amendment, the text amendment, and do it in a planful way. We do, we did just get the funding, thank you, Mr. Went, for the P O C D review. And I would like to spend a little more time on the text amendment, and I, I do believe we could do the opt-out tonight and just separate the two. So might would be to separate.
Right now, yeah. Right now, the the commission, I know we shouldn't be doing this outside of a motion, but let's do it anyways. I mean, the commission has been pretty clear, we're gonna keep them together. If, if, if you're suggesting a tabling, which I, I think I kind of heard somewhat in there as far as more time for it. So let's, right now, I've called for the, a motion on the regulation amendments. Because that's kind of, I think, a driving force is, we were, we wanted to reach out to Affordable Care Committee, not affordable, sorry, Affordable Care. That's affordable housing, not affordable care, that's my job, intruding in this. So we've had that. So I'm looking towards the regulation amendments to see if there's gonna be a motion grants to table, to see where things are with that.
I will move to table it, I would like to get a little input on the P O C D, which does include a component for affordable housing. And affordable housing is an issue that I would like to discuss as part of our text amendment.
Okay.
We have a consultant that we're hiring, and we've just gotten approved.
And I do, let's that's a little different than, I think, well, let's have a second, if there is a second, then we can have a discussion about whether to table it or not. Because what I think you're saying is, you want more time for even in this planning session with the new retention we have, and I don't, let's talk about that if we get a second first. Commissioner Francis, seconds?
Yes, I would second that. I personally think that all four items should be voted on separately, I don't care if we do them tonight, but I think they're four separate issues.
You're talking about the regulation amendments.
Yeah, and the opt-out, the three regulation amendments and the opt-out.
Okay. Commissioner Braun, why aren't you just now that we've had meeting with the Affordable Care, Affordable Housing Commission? Why, you know, just kind of go through what are your process as to why?
Yeah, we, we, I would like to hear from our consultant, that we just got approval to retain, I guess, on the plan of conservation and development that we are in process of undertaking, also, the town is in process of updating the affordable housing plans, we have two main initiatives going forward in the next couple of months. Both of which will deal with affordable housing, we don't have an answer yet on, you know, and it's my thought, if we're gonna add ADUs to smaller lot sizes as freestanding, perhaps we should add an affordability component in order to get on a small lot. But we don't have an answer yet on whether a 10-year, 10-year requirement or a 40-year requirement is in there to qualify as affordable housing under 8-30G. So I would like to get an answer to that, we, that's unclear and unknown right now. And I'd like to have, to see what our consultant has to say about that. This all is encompassed within our plan of conservation and development, also within the Affordable Housing Committee's work that they're working on. So I would like to table it. And that's why I'd like to separate it, but I understand nobody else does.
Commissioner Francis?
Yeah.
Anything to add, I mean?
Yeah, as I said, I I would favor tabling it, I guess, although I, I don't mind voting on the opt-out and the requirement for annual recertification. But it's it's a hard issue. Yeah, I really don't see why they're together, but they are. It's a hard issue, because people just have different ideas on how they want the town developed and how much more density and how much more population. But you know, even if we do decide to go with allowing accessory apartments in the B and C zones and allowing in detached units in the yards of double-A and R3 zones. There's no guarantee of affordability. So we're getting nothing out of this, except more population and more density. And people just have different feelings about that, some people feel you should have full use of your property and do anything you want with it. And others care about the environment more, others care about long-range planning more. And others care about the neighborhood, the quiet, the quality, that kind of thing. We represent all these citizens who have all these opinions. And I'm sure none of us is going to change his opinion, we all think what we think. It's hard. So it's challenging. Would imagine even this will pass.
Commissioner Went, sorry, Mr. Went, excuse me.
What was the battlefield promotion there? I just want to respond to the, to the question that was asked, that the statute a 10-year deed restriction on affordable or on an accessory apartment would qualify under 8-30G as an affordable unit, however, the Department of Housing has taken a position that that such a unit is not credited towards moratorium points unless it is deed restricted for a period of 40 years. So the statute defines an affordable ADU is deed restricted for 10. So it would qualify towards the 10% goal, but it wouldn't count towards moratorium points unless it's deed restricted for 40 years.
Yeah, and that was my recollection from what we had at the Affordable Housing Joint Meeting as well. I mean, I was, let me go, I'll recap quickly the history of where we are with this. These regulation amendments and this opt-out came to us earlier this year. There was a request by, I know, Commissioner Braun at the time to table it, to have a meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee, to get their input on ADUs and potentially an affordable aspect to that. In between then and now, we had the meeting, and we also relearned that we had this conversation last year. Meetings about this as well. I'm comfortable moving forward with the regulations at this point, this isn't just a matter of, I think, a courtesy to extend to get more information on a particular matter. Commissioner Braun, you're asking for more planning meetings about these items. And we've had them, and we've got regulations that, at least I felt comfortable reviewing and potentially granting way back when. And obviously, we can amend our regulations at any points, we can do that now, and we can have further amendments later. So, and I, these are regulate, these are regulations that I do believe in as far as expanding the access as well. I don't feel the need to be putting off the regulation amendments indefinitely. We have them available, we've put a lot of work into them, not just this year, but last year and time before. And we've been putting the, you know, items together because commissioners have the opt-out and the regulation amendments, I've wanted to discuss both, so I don't that was the whole plan, and I don't want to, you know, somewhat leave that because, you know, request for additional time to consider other amendments. We discussed the Affordable Care aspect to it, and it's been included as far as voluntary and require it. I, I think we've had this discussion, and I, last year opposed that idea, this is not the way to get affordable units, I believe, for affordable, for these units that are really meant for other purposes, other family purposes, or maybe, maybe rental income for people, but more often than not, family purposes. So I'm comfortable moving forward with this, and happy to hear any other people. I mean, obviously, moving forward today doesn't mean we don't talk about the affordable, excuse me, the accessory units with our, in other planning discussions or with the person we've retained to help. I just think, right now, these are, these are amendments that I would support. And I'm happy to fine-tune them later, or expand them, or do them later, but I think, you know, now is a good time to strike the iron, so to speak. Commissioner, leaving?
I also agree with your your points, Mr. Chairman. We've had opportunity to review these regulations, we had the meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee. I'm comfortable with, you know, considering them as they stand now, to the extent that they provide additional options, you know, for residents of the towns, alternative, you know, you know, affordable housing options, the sooner the better. To my mind, the only issue is whether or not we might, at a later day, choose to extend it further. And that's something where certainly the consultants could weigh in, but in terms of to the extent that these regulations are sort of somewhere between where we are and where the state would mandate, I'm ready to go forward now and see no reason to delay it and defer the issue in terms of having further, you know, options for people within the town to have, you know, meet their various lifestyles in affordable housing.
Commissioner Breman?
I agree, we took a look at our ADU regulations in 2021, and it was bipartisan and very consensus-driven approach by Fairfield senior advocates, the Affordable Housing Committee and Fair Plan. We amended them very incrementally, and we said we'd take a look at whether we had opened up the floodgates, or whether we had, you know, just modestly expanded opportunity for diverse types of housing, for seniors, young people, people in life changes, people who are looking for a different kind of living situation that's not currently provided adequately in the market in Fairfield. And we said we'd, you know, take a look at potentially expanding accessory units, you know, as freestanding accessory units beyond the two-acre zone. And in 2020, later in 2021, the legislature amended the zoning laws to create a default regulation for all communities in Connecticut and potential to opt-out, and staff presented us with the question of, you know, whether we want to opt, you know, go with the state default as our own regulation, or opt-out and potentially amend or enhance our own regulations, and at a planning session in September 2021, the consensus was that we would opt-out, and that we would also, you know, further amend our regulations. So that, you know, was what staff did, and I think that the regulations that have been, that were drafted by staff are thoughtful, they strike the right balance. And I'm, you know, prepared to, certainly to review and vote on them, I was prepared, you know, four meetings ago. And I think the, the question is, do we opt-out and amend our regulations to enhance, to move Fairfield closer to the state default? Or do we adopt the state default and rule? And I think they, they're naturally to be considered together, and they, they really have to be considered together in that context. And that's, that's what I wanted to do, and that's why, you know, we postponed this several times, ostensibly to get the input of the Affordable Housing Committee. The Affordable Housing Committee considers ADUs an essential part of providing diverse and affordable housing in Fairfield, which is why they were the sponsor of the 2021 amendments, and why they still consider it a key plank in Fairfield's affordable housing plan. So I, I think we're, we're ready to vote on, on all of this, and we should not table it further for no apparent reason, I think we should vote on both items, both portions of the single agenda item together tonight.
Commissioner Francis?
But we're getting no affordability of this, that's my basic problem with it. I agree with you, Commissioner Breman, we'll probably get older people in accessory apartments or dwelling units. We'll probably get younger people in them. But we're not getting any affordability points.
Well, as Mr. Went said, it goes towards the 10% goal, but not to the moratorium. But I don't think there's anything in our regulations that we can do to change that.
I know.
So, you know.
How does it go to the goal? Does the person have to submit his financial to the Department of Community and Economic Development? Is that how it will go towards the goal?
If, if, if I may, Jim Went, when we discussed this last year and the mechanics of that, and we touched a little bit on it last week, is that right now, there is no incentive for someone that, basically what, what we discussed is that a for someone to deed restrict an apartment for a period of 10 years is likely gonna need to have some sort of economic incentive to do so, which would be something that would fall outside the scope of the regulations, it could be a town program for some sort of tax abatement. But that's beyond the scope, so the availability is there for someone to do it, we've, we've got the regulations that were adopted last year that define what they need to do to qualify, but we're just not requiring them to do so, it's an option, but not a requirement. And, and that was, again, supported that even the Affordable Housing Committee at the time, and presently, you know, isn't seeking that all You know, isn't seeking that all units be deed restricted. They could, but again, we're, we're trying to. Get the state to take a different view on that disconnect. The statute is pretty clear, it defines it as 10% and, and, or I'm sorry, 10, 10 years under 10%, but. There's a different view on the moratorium piece, so anybody that would deed restrict for 10 years would count towards that 10%. But we're not requiring them to do, we're not proposing to require them to do so.
Commissioner Braun.
Just a point of order, are we discussing the motion to table or are we discussing the substance of the text amendment?
Right now, it's a motion to table.
Okay.
Which is, unless there's any other comments, I mean, I think we can put to a vote, so to speak, but. Right now, the motion again is to table the regulation amendments. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Two to five.
I see two, Commissioner Braun and Commissioner Francis. All those opposed, please say aye or raise your hand. The remaining commissioners. It's Bravon. Levy, Ford and Newton. May I have a motion on the regulation amendments then? Commissioner Bravon.
I move to approve the regulation amendment as drafted.
May I have a second? Commissioner Kett. Commissioner Bravon.
Yeah, I, I previewed this a little bit and on the last motion, I'm not going to go into too much detail. I think that, you know, we've. Got a very thoughtful draft from, from Mr. Went and Ms. Harrigan that strikes the right balance between not. Going so far as the state default rule in, in terms of not allowing accessory dwelling units in the Beach District, which is. A unique part of Fairfield that has its own, you know, particular characteristics. And not allowing accessory units on a detached basis in certain smaller zones. But allowing them in more zones than we currently allow them and giving property owners greater flexibility to. To create diverse and varied types of housing arrangements for people who, for whom that, that's attractive. I think it's a naturally occurring form of affordable housing, just structurally based on the fact that it is, you know, incidental or accessory to a main dwelling unit. And I think this will be good, I don't see any unintended negative consequences that could, could flow from it. And I do support this, you know, these amendments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kett.
I really don't have anything to add other than I think these amendments are well thought out and do provide a way forward to meeting our goal, if not the moratorium. For affordable housing, if our goal is only to reach the moratorium, that is, in my opinion. Sacrificing the good for the perfect.
Commissioner Braun.
I don't think we've actually discussed the substance of all the text amendments, so I'd like to go through some of them, if you don't mind. I have a question for Mr. Went. So we're, we would be expanding on in-house, so to speak, within the footprint of the house. From AAA, AA, R3, R2 and A and adding on B and C. And then for freestanding ADUs, we would be expanding from the current. AAA, we'd be adding the ability to put a freestanding on AA and R3. So my follow-up for Jim are, could you just tell us again the square footage or acreage of those adders for both of those? And also. When you do the freestanding, you can actually construct a new. A new freestanding building, it doesn't have to be an existing garage or something like that. I just need to know the dimensions of the parcels that we're adding, like in-house or on the footprint, B and C, what's the size of those parcels?
All right, the B and C parcels for single family. Minimum lot size is. 6,000 square feet in the B zone and 5,000 square feet in the C zone.
So that's, is that, that's smaller than quarter acre, probably, right?
Yes, quarter acre is going to be about 10,000, a little over 10,000 feet.
Oh, so this is eighth of an acre, it's small, okay. And are there any parking requirements or ability to park off-street that we have? In the single-family zone or for ADUs in general, or would, if there are. What happens if there's not enough parking off-street parking?
Well, every single-family dwelling requires at least two off-street parking spaces. In addition to that, to qualify the ADU, you have to have one additional space. So there would have to be the ability to put three cars in a driveway, so to speak. Minimally. That's part of the provision presently in the regulations, so if you can't accommodate a third vehicle on site, you wouldn't be eligible to do, to do so.
And with that, so now moving down to the freestanding, and again, I guess I should have mentioned the regulation number. What we were just talking about was 6.3. And now I'm going to move down to 6.3.8, which is freestanding. We would be adding the ability to do freestanding to AA and R3. And what are the sizes of AA and R3?
R3 minimum lot is one acre and R3 is 20,000 square feet, which is slightly less than a half an acre. It's approximately half an acre.
Okay, oh, AAA is one acre, okay.
AAA is one acre, R3 is approximately half an acre.
So presumably, we wouldn't have a parking issue on there, anyone who has a lot that large probably has adequate driveway, but the same rule would apply.
Same rule would apply, that's correct.
So is that, would there be a problem with expanding the freestanding to include. Acreage instead of the name of the district, the name of the zone? For example, if you have three acres, but you happen to be in a quarter acre zone or an R3 zone or an R, or a smaller zone. I'm thinking of parts that have been developed that are larger, but they're in. Would there be an issue with expanding it by acreage as opposed to by zone? So if you have the acreage that's in a larger zone, but you happen to be in a smaller zone, why not allow freestanding ADU there as well? To me, that would be a little bit more flexible.
Well, that's certainly an option that the commission can consider down the road. It would be an expansion of what we're proposing here, that in addition to lots that meet the minimum lot acre in those districts. What I'm, think I'm hearing you say is if you're in a, a, a smaller zone than R3, but have an R3-sized lot, you should also be eligible. So that's a possibility we could consider for, for potential expanded opportunity. We didn't do so here, but that's, but that's something we could consider.
I don't see any reason not to consider it, I, I would actually like to add that to the language here, but that, let me move on to my other questions then. Just, so now we just talked about the size of the lot and the expansion that we're considering and. The, the next section is on 6.3.7, we're deleting the portion where the owner would have to get recertified every year? Is that what that 6.3.7 is? And if so, how are we protected to know that they're following the rules?
Well, similar to any, any zoning violation, we have the ability to, to investigate that if someone were to allege that there, there's a violation. The new ownership still has to file a, a new owner affidavit. So it just would negate the need for us to send out annually, you know, letters to folks to have notarized and, and send back that they're still operating under the same conditions. The chief condition being that the owner of the premises has to live. On-site to be eligible for an apartment, they can't rent both units. If you have an accessory apartment, you have to, has to be owner occupied in no more than two people renting or occupying an apartment. Those things are enforceable beyond a, a annual recertification, should we determine that someone is not in compliance. More often than not, you know, these issues come up, you know, requests for compliance inspections or, or whether it's a compliant unit. You know, when a, when a property sells is when, you know, the new owner investigates those things. If, if there are more than the requisite or the required number of people in the apartment, we're likely going to hear about it from, from a neighbor, because that's going to result in additional cars. In, in occupants and that's something we can investigate outside of the requirement for annual recertification.
I guess, taking it out altogether, to me, just kind of opens the door for, for abuse of the regulation. Would it make sense to make it maybe not every year, because that's kind of onerous, but maybe like every two years or three years or four years?
That's a possibility, but again, but that's whatever the commission deems appropriate.
I'm interested in what Emily and Ms. Harrigan had to say.
I mean, I, I would just say that, you know. So when you look in some of our permit history, we had tracked this for almost 10 years. And it really just became, you know, a significant administrative function with. You know, bothering these homeowners where they're really in that 10-year span, when you look at the permit history, there's been no issue. So it's both a burden to the property owner to come into us every year, drop off these forms, have them notarized. And, and it really hasn't, we haven't discovered any issues, so I, I think it's, it's, it's nice to have that, but it's not really. We've just found that it hasn't really been necessary when you look at the permit history.
I, I wonder if that would change if we're expanding the ability for people to have them to a much greater. Geographic area, I would expect more people having ADUs as a result of this new regulation. And so perhaps there would be more of that. And just waiting for someone to sell, that's good that they have to file, but people own properties for a long time. I would like to see it, maybe not every year, maybe five years or three years, just so that somebody has an, they are aware of the obligation, that they have to reside there. And follow the other rules.
Yeah, I, just to expand on what Emily said, I, I would agree that we haven't had a, a. Large track record of violations and ones that we have had. That we have dealt with outside of the scope of the annual recertification process. I mean, there's one I can think of where, where we had an occupancy question come to light because of the number of vehicles and that led to some changes. Again, but that was outside of the scope of an annual recertification process, so I think on the whole. We don't, we don't see it as a real value-added proposition here.
Is this, is this affidavit the recertification or is there a separate procedure? This is the affidavit that they would be filing every year, right?
There is a requirement that an affidavit be filed by the owner upon the application to qualify. And then the regulations presently require an annual affidavit to be submitted. What we are proposing to dispense with is that annual recertification. They still need to file the initial affidavit upfront. Signing off that they, they understand what the rules of the road are. We're just, we're just proposing to eliminate that, that annual. Disposal of that, we, we can always fall back from an enforcement standpoint on the initial affidavit that they submitted. To show that they were aware, at least at that time, what, what the regulations are. So I, we don't believe that it's going to hinder our ability to enforce the provisions of the regulations.
And so there's actually two things that happen initially. One, when you're applying for certification initially. And number two, when you purchase a residence, in either of those instances, the owner would have to file paperwork with you.
Correct.
Now, getting back to affordability, so just to clarify, because it's so confusing. The state law for eight dash thirty G. Requires 40-year deed restriction. For, for affordability if you're working towards a moratorium. Only a 10-year deed restriction for affordability to work towards the 10% objective of eight dash thirty G, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm always thinking more of the, you know, the moratorium, it looks like we're more or less on track for anyway. The, the overarching goal of eight dash thirty G is 10% of your housing stock to be certified as affordable. We do have a provision in our existing reg, which is completely optional. And the only way to get people to do it would be to incentivize them and, and Mr. Barnhart explained that to us. If somebody needs a new roof or there's some kind of a fund in town where they can help financially and perhaps you can get people to agree. But that's outside of the jurisdiction of what we do, right?
Correct, and, and the other thing that was clarified in the statute last year is in the change to eight dash two is, is the. The, that ADUs that are. Aren't, aren't counted in neither the numerator nor the denominator in that 10% calculation. So there's not an issue of whether it's going to change the, the math. So in either case, I, I don't think it's going to move the needle very much in that regard, as, as I've said, it's more of an option for. More of a housing choice option, it's likely to be more affordable even as a, as a non-deed restricted unit. So it wasn't really the goal here to make this a. You know, a tool with respect to eight dash three specifically, but just as others have said, more of another option for folks to expand housing opportunity in general.
So it's neutral based on the new state law and maybe even the existing state law, but it, it wouldn't be neutral if we did have deed restricted ADUs, right? If they did follow, they'd have to do more than just put a deed restriction, if there's other things they have to do to make it. Is there separate construction requirements for eight dash thirty G that might be a little different than our housing code or no?
There's some pretty quirky language in the eight dash thirty G that regulations can't, you know, prohibit a entrance between the two units. There's some weird language there, but that really wasn't our, our focus here.
So if somebody did want to do it for whatever.
Yep. Just, you know. I'm not going to try and say too much, but, you know, we are in an executive session, we should be discussing amongst the commission kind of where we stand with the regulations. We already had the public hearing to ask questions, I think a lot of these things were addressed. If you have a few extra kind of clarifying questions, so be it, but I don't want to redo the public hearing in this executive session.
Can I ask them one more question?
No, I, I just point that out, so I, because I don't want this to go too long. If you have a few extras, so be it, but I do want to put that out there.
Okay, so we, I'm taking advantage of the learning we did at the Affordable Housing Committee meeting and I appreciate all of everybody's time. One last question, so. If, so if Mr. Barnhart convinces somebody to, you know, we'll give you money to fix your house and you'll, you'll do an ADU and you'll put the deed restriction. Does that then go over to us where then they would follow our section 6.3.7 regarding that? And if that happens, does that then make it qualify for the 10% if they do the 10-year deed restriction? That would then qualify.
That's, that's, that's correct. I, I agree with that, yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other member of the commission? I have just a few comments, I don't, I won't be repetitive of others. Yeah, as I foreshadowed earlier, and I, I do support these regulation amendments, they. They expand the, the ability to use these ADUs in other zones. Keeping with all the setback and all the technical requirements that we already have, increasing it, which is, I think, great. Commissioner Braun's acreage idea is a good idea that I think can be done at another time, because I'm comfortable in the fact that if there is one or two. Lots that are not in these new zones that, but have the requirement, if there really is an issue, a variance route is, could be utilized if they needed to. But I like the idea of expanding it more, I think these types of ADUs are good. So in, it should, as we move forward with planning, with the new consultants and, and just in regular course, we should consider other amendments. To ADUs, in my opinion, to reasonably expand where, where we can. Staff's point about the affidavit, I think, is well-taken, spot-on. I think I even mentioned during the hearing, it, it just strikes me that somebody is not going to be filing an affidavit that's probably going to warrant, that's going to admit something to warrant. an affidavit that's probably going to warrant, that's going to admit something to warrant an investigation to begin with. Anything like that, anything like that would probably come from a neighbor. So I accept staff's opinion about the value added of these affidavits not exceeding the burdens associated with them, while I suspect both are de minimis. Still, our staff with limited resources, I think, can be better used elsewhere. What else do I see here? I think that's the main point. So I'm looking through them as well. We've gone through them, and I remember going through them each at the hearing, asking the questions we needed, finding that they were reasonable. In my opinion, should be adopted by this commission. And again, doesn't mean we stop. Obviously, they are, we can amend them at any time, and we should be considering them as we move forward. Any other member of the commission? I'll call for a vote in a second. Commissioner Berman, are you there? I think he might have stepped away, thinking I was going to have a treatise on it. Commissioner Braun?
While we're waiting, I have a question for Mr. Wen again, or Ms. Harrigan. If there is a parking nuisance that's created by this, what's the recourse that anybody has? It's nice that we have the requirement for basically, I guess, three spaces. That might not be enough, which means you will probably have an overflow parking situation. What happens then?
Well, I'll answer it this way. We have many, many homes in town. Every house in town has to have a driveway or the ability to have two cars park off-site. We can't require someone to park in their own driveway. There are many cases where folks park in the street in front of their house rather than in their driveway, or they put one car in the driveway and one car in the street. As long as they have the ability to park them on-site, we can't compel them to physically do so. If they're parking illegally, that's a different matter, and the police department has recourse there. But if somebody's parking publicly or off-site in a compliant parking space or on the street in compliance with the law, then that's not an enforceable issue. But the fact is, they have to have the ability to have that extra parking space on their site to qualify for the apartment, but we can't compel them to physically occupy that space.
Do you see this as, you know, a run-on ADUs and then having tons of parking problems because of this?
I do not.
You have more knowledge than I do about what really happens in real life here.
Yeah, I will say, I mean, we didn't have a huge influx, you know, since the 2021 amendments. There have only been a handful of new applications, so that didn't lead to a huge change in circumstance. And I know that Fairfield senior advocates and others are planning on being, having some promotional, and they've put some brochures that they're trying to make people more aware that the regulations exist and they have that opportunity. But the short answer to your question is no, I don't foresee that to be a problem going forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Berman, I think you've called in now. I see you now. Just hang up. Perfect. Any other members of the commission with questions or comments, or can we put this to a vote? The motion is to approve the regulation amendments as drafted, as presented. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I think I see seven. Any opposed? See none. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, you do need, there is that second piece to this.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
I'm sorry to jump the gun, but the opt-out has to be a separate vote.
Nope, thank you. So next, I will call for a motion with respect to opting out of the state default language with respect to accessory units. Commissioner Braun? Commissioner Braun?
Yes, I move to opt out of the state law. I think it's under Public Act 2128.
Mr. Wen? Second. Commissioner Berman, second. Any comments? I think we've kind of all addressed.
We've twice now expanded. First, well, both on our own initiative. We're expanding in a way based on the expert, you know, consultation with our own experts in our own town. And I think we've done a great job. There's no need to have the state put, you know, the sort of cookie cutter approach over on us. We're doing a good job on our own. We'll probably expand it more as well. I can envision that.
Commissioner Berman?
The state created a default rule that communities can choose to adopt or not adopt, and we use that as an impetus to amend our own regulations further in a way that promotes housing choice.
Thank you. For all the reasons that have been said, I would favor opting out. I think we've done a good job with our regulations addressing what is good for Fairfield. And as I said, we can continue to do so. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of opting out, please say aye or raise your hand. I believe I see seven, but any opposed? See none. Motion passes unanimously.
Just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, where we go from here, this also has to, as it now has unanimous approval, this commission requires a two-thirds vote of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to statute. So we will be packaging up the opt-out for the parking that the commission recently voted to approve and this opt-out to put on the next available Board of Selectmen agenda for their hopefully approval and support of your vote to opt out.
Thank you, Mr. Wen. Next item in old business is 2-6 Beacon Square zoning compliance application of Beacon Square Properties LLC pertaining to a 26-unit residential development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes in the R3 zone. Commissioner Kit, have you, are you up to speed on this item? You're on mute, Commissioner. I know, we all...
Yes, I watched the last hearing, and I've been at the other hearings that discuss this issue, so I'm up to date.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve?
Move to approve. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kit. Commissioner Levy?
Yes. Once again, we have an 830G before us. It does allow for 30% of the units to be affordable housing, which we very much need. It does unfortunately basically cover a significant portion of the lot with a great deal of density in a neighborhood that already is burdened with a fairly dense, you know, fairly dense condition. But mindful of that and well-aware of the neighbors' concerns, I do not see any evidence that would substantiate there's a significant harm to the public interest as a result of, if this 830G plan is not approved and based upon the statutes and the applicable law, under those circumstances, I feel that the application should be granted.
Thank you. Commissioner Kit?
I agree. I have the same reservations about this project being in such a high-density area. I would have liked to have seen it in a different part of town. That being said, I believe that the applicants have addressed all the issues about public health and safety and have met the requirements under 830J. And listening to the neighbors' concerns, you know, one of the big concerns, well, where is overflow parking going to be? Where are visitors going to park? That would be a similar issue if these were single-family lots, where are visitors to those single-family homes going to park? So I don't see it necessarily creating much more of an issue than there already is in that area. I acknowledge there will be increased traffic, there will be increased parking, but I don't think it's going to come at the cost of public health and safety.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman?
I agree for all the reasons.
Commissioner? Any other commissioners who should be heard? I have some, I have some comments as well. Commissioner Ford, and then Commissioner Braun?
You know, this is another 8-30G, and as I commented on Castle Avenue, I guess I was quoted up in the legislature, legislature, at one of the... Phone is ringing, sorry. My comment was, you know, our hands are tied because the statute ties the hand of local control of these issues. And I think the comment of someone testifying before the, I think it was the Housing Committee, was that the statute's working because this is what Mr. Ford said. I think it was my comments were taken out of context. What I'm saying is if the statute's purpose is to remove local control from local zoning boards, you know, that's not the purpose of the statute. The purpose of the statute is to broaden options for housing in the towns throughout Connecticut. The, you know, that was the point in my comments, and I think they apply here as well. You know, this is a, as we've all agree, it's a densely populated neighborhood. People speed through this neighborhood. It's a cut-through from NAPS Highway, from Fairfield High School, from Fairfield Ward to Block Rock Turnpike. High school kids have been cutting through this neighborhood since Ward High School was built. I did it in the 90s, and I'm sure that they did it today. You know, so that's not, you know, having a development this size isn't going to help those kind of issues. And I'm sure that's what the neighbors are concerned about, especially the petition that we received. I think I counted, I think I thought more than 40 names. There were some multiple people inside the same house, but I can understand their frustration. But their frustration, once again, lies not with us, but with the Connecticut Legislature. So, you know, perhaps, you know, maybe the statute could be amended in one way to make these applications a little more adversarial. And what I mean by that is, you know, rather, you know, the attorneys come before us. They've had a head start on the neighbors. The application is very well put together ordinarily, and they've dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's. They have the experts in place who, you know, have rendered their opinion, which is then, you know, used as evidence, you know, if there is an appeal taken. And that evidence, you know, really ties our hand. We don't have an expert who can, you know, who can have another view of what the traffic count would be. We don't have another, you know, independent expert who, you know, could examine the safety issues that would apply, you know? Especially with this application, it was withdrawn, you know, because, you know, this commission pointed out that there was an issue with the fire trucks backing out of the lot, and they had to amend their plan. Our fire marshal should have picked up on that. Not us. We're not fire marshals. You know, so maybe that's something that the legislature considers, you know, an opportunity for at least the residents and the neighbors have, you know, a greater notice and an opportunity to be, you know, further heard than they are. These come up, you know, comes to, the first step is it's on our agenda to be moved to a public hearing, and that's kind of seems, you know, that's when we get the flood of comments. And by then, it's often too late for the neighbors to mount any campaign to, you know, hire their own experts to review the material submitted in any meaningful fashion. Having said all of that, I agree, we have an obligation to follow the law. I haven't seen, you know, evidence that would lead to a decision to deny the application. I understand and hear loud and clear the neighbors once again, but there's, we, I think, are obligated to grant this application. So for all those reasons, I would grant the application.
Commissioner Braun? Thank you, Commissioner Ford.
So I agree with much of what Commissioner Ford said, so I won't repeat most of that. But I would like to add on to that. I do not believe our state legislature passed 8-30G expecting zoning commissions to render decisions without adequate information. And I believe that's what we're doing now, and that's what we've done many times in the past. Just because the neighbors who have a lot of factual knowledge and are the most impacted are not well-heeled enough to spend $50,000 on a lawyer and experts does not mean we should not get that information somehow. And the fact that three months ago, this exact application, except for a little bit of a movement of a driveway, was on its way probably to being approved because there was no expertise saying there was a safety issue. But then apparently there was a safety issue that we didn't know about. And the fire, I don't know who said what, when, it doesn't matter, but at some point, the fire marshal weighed in and said, oh, it's not safe. What would we have done if we actually approved it three months ago? An unsafe fire hazard because we didn't have the expert information before us. It behooves us to seek that information every single time. So I believe that we should be seeking deep-dive reports from our engineering department regarding traffic and parking and fire and public safety, health department if we have to. And I also, when we get these, you know, short emails from, you know, public safety officials, that's not a deep dive. I don't know what they looked at. Did they look at all the parking situations that the neighbors are talking about? I don't know. Something could meet the fire code and still be unsafe. You know, you can sue somebody in court if they have an unsafe condition, even if they satisfied the fire code. So I believe that in this instance, especially in light of the fact that the exact same application, we know fire trucks can't go to the end. They're going to have to bring hoses down. We know that the parking is atrocious according to the neighbors. We know there's a sightline problem leaving the property. A car going out of this property, making a left, does not have adequate sightline. But that apparently is okay with the experts that have talked to us. And they said, well, it's okay because a car approaching the property has sightline. Well, cars tend to speed, and I'm just envisioning that there is an unsafe condition, and I'm going to vote against this for that reason. The fact that we were not informed of an unsafe condition and we probably would have approved this with a fire hazard, that tells me we need better information from all of our public officials on safety and health and the general welfare. And I will extend that beyond that to wildlife. I believe there should be a wildlife survey if we're ever mowing down forested areas, which is what's happening here. So I think there is a safety issue. I don't think we have enough information right now. The fact that the same application came before us three months ago, there was no expert opinion saying there was an unsafe condition, and yet it was withdrawn because of a fire hazard, that tells me we still need more information. So I'm going to not support this application.
So I will cut to the chase. I feel that this application needs to be granted for the simple reason that I don't believe there's sufficient evidence to deny it based on the law, the standards that we are bound to abide by. It does not mean that the neighbors' concerns about the additional burdens and the additional burdens and impairments of their daily life are not well-founded and accurate and do actually exist. The question is, are there significant health and safety concerns that outweigh the need for a public, for a favorable housing? And this is an application that was reviewed twice, and I'll go through the history again because I think there's been some errors in its recitation of the history. But it has been reviewed twice, and our own departments have come back and accepted the... analysis from the applicant, from the applicants and noted this that it's safe. Um, so a quick recitation of the history of this, this did come before us last year. We had the hearing. And at the close of the hearing, a question was made by one of our commissioners about the length of the driveway with respect to buyer access. Before that, there was no issues. The applicant and it's and his team, its team worked with the fire marshal, drew up these plans and conform and conformity with the fire marshal recommendations and the fire code and any other applicable building code. And it was that second time asked from by one of our commissioners that the fire marshal realized an error had been made. And essentially, you know, raised raised the red flag as to that. Um, it happens, people make mistakes. Had we missed, had he missed it a second time when they're applying for a building permit, that probably would have been noted there and it would have to be either come back to us or something to have done at the building permit section. But certainly nothing wrong done wrong by the applicants, honest mistake from the fire marshal's department. Um, it happens. It came back to us the second time with the issue being resolved, at least that specific issue. It was plenty of time, we, our staff gave us sufficient information. We made sure everybody on the commission had an opportunity to reach out to any departments that they felt they needed additional information from. Um, trap, uh, engineering opined on the sightline specifically, saying that they were safe. They use a different determination, line of sight versus the stopping analysis. And I forget the exact name of it, but our own engineering department has come back and said that the stopping distance sightline was adequate. Uh, engineering was fine, fire marshal was fine, traffic was fine. There's been no evidence to suggest to the contrary. Is it a high, is it a road that is highly traveled? Yes. Speeding? Yes, I suspect that's true and possibly, but certainly nothing that this application will do to add significant harm to outweigh the need of affordable housing. Um, we're, as I've said going forward, I hope after every public hearing for eight thirty G to keep it open an extra week or extra session so additional information can be ascertained. The applicant gave us sufficient information. The departments have given us sufficient information to act on this. It is, again, unfortunate that a dense project is going into another another dense area. I'll note fairly that it could be worse. We've seen it worse in other instances. I at least acknowledge that the applicant was somewhat fair in how dense they made it. It is still very dense. But I think it could have been worse. And I at least acknowledge that to the applicant. Um, I'm not sure if us citing a lack of information is ever gonna work, actually, and um, if this were denied because we said we didn't get sufficient information. Um, I don't know if a court will deal with that because we have the burden to prove that there's a substantial harm in public safety, health and welfare that outweighs need for affordable housing. And I'm not so sure that in a regular application for an eight thirty G, when they go through all the steps to present that application, have all and have the experts, have our own departments review them, normally for code enforcement. And they don't normally come to us when there's a major issue. You know, like have sign off for most people. We're gonna be able to sit there and say, there's not enough information. I just, I think, put all the commissioners on notice that it is gonna be up to us that if you feel you don't have enough information, we need to ask the specific questions. Asking if there's enough sightline is a pretty simple question that engineering can give us. I don't expect them to be writing treatises on uh, how they came across it. I mean, is there adequate sightline? Yeah, yes or no answer, I think is sufficient. If it's not, we need to be a little more detailed as opposed to just, I think, a very nebulous, give us more information. Um, so I challenge, I mean, I put that to a challenge to all of us. If you feel that you need more information on an eight thirty G application or any application, our staff is always there if you ask them. The important thing is asking them. Um, but in this case, for all the reasons I've said, and for all the evidence that's in the record, I cannot point to a piece of a piece of material, concrete evidence uh, to base a denial that this uh, impairs public health and safety to outweigh the need for affordable housing. And again, to the neighbors, I'm not saying that your testimony is wrong. I'm, I think you're all true that the this project will further burden the area. Um, but I think that the eight thirty G standard is clear. Um, and that's, as I said, there's not sufficient information to meet the legal standard for denial. Commissioner Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excellent comments and I thank Commissioner Ford very much for his very on target. The only other thing I would add, if anyone in Hartford is listening or interested in alleviating the eight thirty G density somewhat is the lack of open space. These, this project is so tight. You know, these people end up with no land. You know, the developer says, oh, these are, these are private homes. But they can't walk out their back door. There's four feet of grass. There's now that they've had to move the parking spaces, there's nothing in the back. They, you know, they can't sit, relax, have a grill, anything. The one on High Street was the worst, taking the the whole backyard and painting it for parking. Which isn't going forward at the moment, but it it's just they just leave out this whole quality of life open space component in all these. That's my comment. It's an attractive development and I do believe there'll be a phase two when that those other, that other duplex, is it two duplexes to the left? I'm sure we'll see more on this side. It would, it would be nice if if these buildings just weren't quite so long and we maybe got six affordable units instead of they make, they could just be more green space back there. But I will stop.
Thank you, Commissioner Francis. Any other comments? Commissioner Berman.
I'll be brief. I agree with your comments, Mr. Chair, and I would just add that historically, as a commission, we have not shied away from demanding additional information from the applicant and its experts from requiring scrutiny by our, you know, town departments and officials of uh, these applications and of conditioning, imposing significant conditions on applications where we think there's an issue of health, safety or welfare or other matters that we can consider. Um, and of denying them when appropriate.
And I hope that, I mean, this was difficult because this is the second time we saw it, but for a new eight thirty G, I'm hopeful that with not closing a hearing, leaving public comment open, it'll give us and the public time to reach out to our departments and reach out to the applicants as well and give them time to respond as well. Um, so that's my hope going forward. It was not used in this case simply because it was literally the second time we saw it, so point was somewhat um, not needed, I guess. Any other members of the commission or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I think I see six. All oppose. Commissioner Braun. Motion passes six one. Which brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. I will, before I call the first item, I'll just again say to anybody, any member of the public who's here for the Fairfield University application, ten seventy three North Benson Road, that application has been withdrawn without prejudice, so it will not be heard today, or excuse me, tonight. Um, Mr. Went, may I call the first item or is there anything else we need to? Okay, I got a thumbs up. So I will call the first item, zoning regulation amendments, application of the Economic Development Development Commission to amend section twelve point three point fifteen, twelve point four point seventeen, twelve point five point fifteen, thirteen point fourteen point two, twenty one point sixteen point three point twelve and twenty eight point six point twelve of the zoning regulations. Mr. Barnhart, I believe you're taking lead on this.
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Mark Barnhart. I'm the director of Community Economic Development for the town of Fairfield and I'm appearing before you this evening on behalf of the Fairfield Economic Development Commission, which is proposing a series of amendments. I won't recite them because you just did, but they all pertain to the provision of outdoor dining in the in the town of Fairfield. Um, broadly speaking, the overall intent of these changes is to make it easier for restaurants to both establish or expand uh, outdoor dining areas and lessen the parking requirements in order for them to do so. Uh, as I'm sure all of you are aware, these last few years have been incredibly challenging for many small businesses. Uh, perhaps none more so than our local independent restaurants. Uh, restaurants, like many small businesses, have had to adapt and reinvent themselves on the fly in order to survive. Uh, and certainly many of them took advantage of new flexibility uh, that the state and the town created regarding the provision of outdoor dining. Uh, since May of twenty twenty, in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic and based on executive orders promulgated both at the state and local level, Fairfield Restaurants have been able to establish uh, either new or to expand existing outdoor dining area through an expedited permitting process. And much credit and thanks go to all the staff, planning and zoning included, and this commission for your support for those efforts. Uh, restaurants in doing that did not need to make any additional provisions for off street parking. In some cases, restaurants were very creative in you and creating outdoor dining areas within existing parking lots, uh, effectively reducing the number of off street parking areas, spaces that were previously available to patrons. Uh, in Fairfield, which has long supported outdoor dining, we've had a regulatory scheme in place for a number of years now. Uh, there were forty seven restaurants that took advantage of this increased flexibility, sixty percent of which were restaurants that chose to create new locations for outdoor dining. Uh, the feedback that the town has received has been overwhelmingly positive. Uh, the expanded outdoor dining has been welcomed both by restaurant operators and the public alike, providing additional opportunities for folks to dine alfresco and to support an industry that's been, that was particularly hard hit by the pandemic. Uh, we did do a survey of of local restaurants to ascertain uh, their feelings with respect to these changes. And in that survey, seventy five percent of the respondents credited outdoor dining as crucial uh, to their business's survival. And more than eight, uh, in ten of the survey respondents expressed interest in making permanent some of those changes that were done temporarily. And while the pandemic has certainly ebbed, the news has been favorable. Uh, businesses continue to feel the effects with and deal with issues such as supply chain disruption, staffing shortages and increased costs, all of which continue to exert some drag on the recovery of this industry. And we'll say the one silver lining uh, from all the upheaval and disruption caused by the pandemic is it certainly forced many of us, business owners, the town, others, uh, to be creative and think outside the box and try different things. In the case of outdoor dining, that certainly was the case. We had, in essence, a real world laboratory to evaluate the impact of some of these changes. And based on our observations and discussions with the staff, other members of the public, restaurant operators, uh, the temporary expansion of outdoor dining uh, created no significant adverse impacts that we could ascertain. So in light of this and in light of the feedback that we've been receiving from restaurant operators, at its meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty two, the Fairfield Economic Development Commission voted unanimously to propose a series of changes to our regulations as it relates to outdoor dining. And those changes are as follows. Uh, first, to eliminate the requirement that at least three quarters of the customer seats be located within enclosed building space as found in sections twelve point three point fifteen, twelve point four point seventeen, twelve point five point fifteen, thirteen point fourteen point two and twenty one point sixteen point three point twelve. We also, secondly, would propose for your consideration increasing from a hundred fifty square feet to five hundred seventy five square feet the size of an outdoor dining area that is permitted without the restaurant having to provide additional off street parking as found in section twenty eight point six point twelve. And lastly, we're recommending the commission's strike language in section twenty eight point six point twelve that refers to a dining season and that requires zoning approval and annual certification by the commission. Uh, we're proposing instead this be handled administratively to some of the issues that were just debated earlier this evening. So the biggest regulatory impediment for most businesses looking at expanding opportunities for outdoor dining is the requirement to provide off street parking based on the one space per every forty square feet of patron floor area. At present, the town allows a hundred fifty square feet of outdoor dining space in essence, free without providing additional off street parking. As as we've indicated the last couple of years, we've been able to expand that without any discernible negative effect on parking or other public safety issues. And therefore, we're suggesting that you increase that uh, from a hundred fifty square feet to five hundred seventy five square feet, which is based on a survey of the already approved temporary dining locations and taking the median or the midpoint in terms of those locations. So it's not the maximum or the minimum, but somewhere in between. Um, we believe that we can do that without obviously having any discernible negative effect, but certainly providing the public an opportunity to enjoy additional outdoor dining more 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 lastingly. Similarly, we're also suggesting that you eliminate the requirement that at least three quarters of the of the customer seats be located within a building. Um, again, we don't see the need to have those that restrictive of language uh, to allow for outdoor dining to thrive within our community. And lastly, as evidenced by this past week, you know, our traditional season is April through October, but there are many times in March, November, December, where conditions are such that the the public is actually looking to dine outside. And we would like to encourage that. So we think that, you know, referring to a season should be stricken from the language. And similarly, we we don't, we're not aware of any situation where the annual certification has has changed the outcome. Uh, there is sufficient enforcement authority uh, imbibe with zoning commissions, the zoning staff to take enforcement actions should uh, an operator, uh, not not comply with the regulations as relates to outdoor dining. Uh, so in conclusion, what we would like uh, to see is that, or we would, we would argue that enactment of these changes would have uh, a modest but nonetheless important uh, impact that would enable restaurants to continue to respond and meet patron demand for alfresco dining situations as well as uh, to remain economically competitive and recover from. as well as, uh, to remain economically competitive and recover from the effects of the pandemic. So for these reasons, on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, we would respectfully ask this commission to approve the amendments. Uh, thanks again for the opportunity to present this, uh, application for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Any members of the, yeah, see Commissioner Bron.
Um, I'm just looking through the materials and Metro Cog, it, um, supports this initiative. They have one concern towards the town and maybe you and/or Mr. Went, um, can address that. Uh, they said, they suggested that on-street parking patterns and remaining parking lot functions be observed to determine if sufficient levels exist and that they will not impede existing roadway conditions. Um, can you just explain that a little bit and let us know if there's any concern at all with extending from one fifty to five seventy-five without adding more parking? If that's a concern, the other things I totally agree with, um, but that's one concern I had.
Well, I'll certainly defer to my colleague, Mr. Went, if he has something to add.
Yeah, I can address that, um, um, Jim Went for the record. I, I think what that's referring to is, is the, the temporary executive order in the, in the COVID protocols that we have adopted have allowed restaurants to actually occupy some portion of their parking area to accommodate outside dining. And that's still the case under the COVID protocol. Uh, and there may be, there is pending, I will, uh, just from the commission's information, there is a bill, uh, pending in the legislature this session that would extend that. Um, it's due to expire, I believe, the end of this month or some, sometime at the end of April, April. Um, that if the bill passes, it would extend again, uh, for an additional year, that opportunity. This is a more longer-term look, uh, on the expansion of the patron area, but it does not anticipate that we would allow folks to occupy parking spaces to satisfy, you know, to accommodate their, their seating. So it's, it's an opportunity to have a greater footprint of, of outdoor dining without the need for parking, but not within an existing parking lot. So this would be, um, more liberal than our regulation is presently, but a little more conservative than what the, um, the temporary legislation permits.
Do you, do you see an issue with parking overflow?
Well, I think what's going to happen is that many of the, these COVID protocol permits are going to have to contract when they're ultimately timed out uh, so that they are not occupying portions of their parking lot unless those spaces are over and above what they need. So not every restaurant is going to be in a position to have a full-fledged five hundred and seventy-five square foot outdoor dining area because they're phys, they don't have the physical space to accommodate it. But those that do would, you know, to the extent that they can, would, they, they'd have a greater opportunity. Uh, we are not, we, we did discuss this and we were not proposing to allow folks to occupy parking, whereas I think Metro Cog's comment was that the, uh, the temporary legislation allows folks to do that without penalty. Um, and, and that's fine because there were a lot, there were less things happening within those parking lots while the restaurants needed to be open, but we're not anticipating that expansion. So there's going to have to be some, in some cases, contraction of what they have now, uh, to, to get those, some of these dining areas out of their existing parking lots.
Thank you.
I'm so glad I called my first witness because I could.
Any other members of the commission? Uh, Commissioner Levy's up next, then Commissioner Francis. But I will, before I get to them, just for any members of the public that wish to be heard when we get to public comment, uh, if you can please sign up in the chat function, I will also make an announcement if you're on your phone as well, but I forgot to mention that earlier. Commissioner Levy and then Commissioner Francis.
Yes, uh, my question's probably best directed to Mr. Went. Um, with respect to twenty-eight point six twelve, which is the parking and the exemption of a hundred and fifty, uh, if we expand that to five hundred and seventy-five square feet, if a, uh, restaurant has more than that, would they then be subject to, let's say they've got seven hundred, uh, square feet, would they then have to have one space for each forty feet over the five seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Commissioner Francis and then Commissioner Ford.
Where, where are the restaurants that have all this parking, Brick Walk?
Uh, they're actually located throughout town, but there, there are a number of, of obviously located downtown.
Because I, I find it pretty hard to park downtown. We, we go out every Saturday night and it's, you know, the Sherman Green parking lot is done and the building on Sherman Street doesn't want you to park there anymore. So you park along Sherman Street and the Long Reef Road. I don't know. What about Little Pub, uh, who occupies about six, eight, ten of their spaces? Is that going to stop?
All right, again, the, the point that was raised by, uh, Mr. Went, um, if they have the space on their property, then this would allow for the expansion. Right now, uh, several restaurants, Little Pub included, are utilizing, uh, portions of their parking lot to create outdoor dining, um, under the temporary authority granted by both the state and local authorities under, with the COVID nineteen protocols in place, which are set to expire, uh, although there is legislation pending that would extend it for another year.
Yeah.
Uh, but this, this does not include that. So this, this does not, uh, propose that we take, uh, existing parking lots, uh, for that purpose. My, my point in raising it earlier was simply to point out that even with, uh, those extraordinary measures taken whereby restaurants have utilized, uh, portions of their property dedicated for off-street parking to create out, uh, additional outdoor dining spaces, we have not seen any discernible adverse impacts as relates to that. So, um, all in all, I think, again, this is a fairly modest proposal. It would obviously make it a little easier for restaurants to establish outdoor dining beyond what our current regulatory scheme permits, but not as expansive as what was provided under the temporary legisla, or temporary authority granted, um, uh, by the, by the state and, and local authorities in response to the pandemic.
Now, did you take a survey? You mentioned, you know, you'd ask restaurant owners and somebody and the public. I, I don't remember ever getting an email about a public survey for this recreation. I've gotten housing, I've gotten, I don't remember getting one about restaurants.
To clarify, to clarify, we, we surveyed restaurants as to how impactful, how beneficial it was, what their experience or feedback was as relates to, uh, outdoor dining, um, and asked for, for their, um, um, response as relates to that. Um, and then, and then with, with, with respect to looking at the entire list of outdoor, temporary outdoor dining locations that were approved, again, that was the basis for recommending the five hundred and seventy-five square feet, uh, as the parking allowance, uh, offset.
Now, what restaurant has five hundred and seventy-five feet? Besides Brick Walk, I suppose, because the stores aren't open at night.
Uh, I don't have it off, off the top of my head, but, uh, but I know there were, uh, several that have, um, outdoor dining locations more than five hundred square feet at present.
Okay. Since town is the real, the center is, is hard to find places Friday and Saturday nights. They're all crowded, which is great, but it's hard too. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ford.
I, I don't know, but who to direct my question to, but I would, I, I know we're talking about, um, square footage and parking, but what about other options for outdoor dining? And like, for example, rooftop decks and, uh, things of that nature? Has that been considered and, and, um, you know, I guess what's your opinion on if a restaurant wanted to, you know, maybe, like, maybe the Little Pub is a good example. I don't know what interior staircase up to their roof, but could they, if they wanted to, uh, could they put a rooftop deck, uh, uh, up above for outdoor dining? Rather than, the question I'm, is really because Little Pub, you know, is in, into that parking lot. So that would save the spots and kind of, you know, put the patrons, you know, elsewhere, but still be able to dine outside. Hey, I can take a stab at that, um, that, I think we would consider it outdoor dining, outdoor dining, whether it be on the ground or on the roof. So if, if there is a situation where it can be accommodated, um, other than on the ground, I think that that would be included in that calculation, you know, that, uh, it's, I don't think it's limited to, uh, on the ground, it's just expanding outdoor dining opportunities. So if, if there are circumstances where that could be done, uh, in, you know, in, in an efficient way, then that I think we can accommodate that under this proposal.
Thank you.
If, if I could just add to that too, if, if you do consider that, having worked in a place that included the Sunset Strip, you have to be very careful about your hours of operation because noise travels a little bit differently on rooftops than behind a building or sandwiched in between structures. So just want to throw that cautionary tale out there.
Thank you. Yes, it's something to consider, yes. Um, Mr. Barn, quick question, well, not sure how quick, but, um, one of the things I caught my attention in what we're, what the regulation amendments are doing is it looks like with eliminating the three-quarters requirement, uh, and also increasing the square footage outside, the two together looks like as if we are, are allowing an increase in tables for these restaurants. I mean, that's, is that, that's what I envision a possibility is if you're able to, if you get rid of the three, four, three, four, uh, three-quarters amendment. So, you know, a restaurant who could have four inside, has a hundred square foot outside, you go three and, three inside, one outside. You get rid of the three-fourths, now all of a sudden, they, you know, they actually get, without even expanding the front, they can maybe be able to get more, another table outside or two, obviously depending on site. But then they're allowed to increase, you know, and it strikes me more table, we're granting the restaurants to have more tables, which I'm not suggesting is a bad thing and will probably also be, uh, limited in their capacity, their kitchen capacity to begin with. But am I wrong in thinking that this will or allow for more tables for these restaurants?
I, I think that's potentially true. I, I don't think that it's, uh, that there are perhaps many examples of that. And I think, uh, what I would also, what you, uh, pointed out is that the site would have to accommodate that. So not every, uh, location will certainly allow for, absent some, uh, some, uh, special authority by which, uh, as is presently the case, we've allowed folks to take up portions of their parking lot for this purpose. Um, you know, absent that, I, I'm not sure that there are that many sites that would, uh, allow for it, but I guess, uh, theoretically that would be possible, yes.
Okay. No, good, I just want to make sure I understood because if we are adding tables, and as you said, it's site-specific and certainly kitchen-specific. I mean, I can't imagine a restaurant wants to add five tables if it can't handle the, the extra traffic and extra business. That can't be good, I'm sure. But if we are adding extra tables, then my initial, you know, I, I am somewhat suspect, uh, suspicious of the parking impact it could have. Um, you're adding, you're adding tables, you're adding capacity.
Well, it would be up to five hundred and seventy-five feet should the, should the site allow for it. And I, I think what we were initially envisioning is that there are, there were some instances where, um, some restaurants that were fairly small and limited in terms of their indoor seating took advantage of the additional flexibility granted, um, by virtue of the pandemic. And again, we didn't see, um, based on the feedback we've had and conversations we've had with other, uh, not just your staff, but other regulatory, uh, staff, uh, observed any, uh, adverse impacts associated with that. So, uh, to the extent to which we could allow for that within a site to allow some of those smaller establishments to provide increased outdoor dining for the long haul, uh, we thought that that was, uh, was a good thing. Uh, but again, I think it's, it's a fairly limited, uh, uh, opportunity. Again, very sites, uh, specific, uh, where the site would have to allow for it without, you know, cannibalizing pieces of the parking lot to do that, which is currently the case. And, uh, you know, most of the restaurants that have taken advantage of it are ones that, um, you know, you think of as, as sit-down restaurants. But there were a few, uh, circumstances, uh, you know, that we had smaller, smaller places do that. And I think, you know, again, to the extent to which the site would allow for it, that would be something we'd like to encourage long, long, uh, beyond this.
If, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Went.
I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, um, notwithstanding the pandemic, it, it's been our experience that, that if you have a greater opportunity for outside dining, that doesn't mean your total capacity or the total number of people at your restaurant are going to increase. If you have a hundred seats inside and a hundred, and now you have a hundred seats outside, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be two hundred folks there at any given time. It's just those hundred folks on a nice day will tend to be outside rather than inside. And when weather doesn't permit, likely to be inside rather than outside, not necessarily expanding your, um, patronage, uh, um, to two hundred in total, uh, because when weather permits, folks would rather be outside. Um, so that's, that's been our experience.
That experience and that, and that's helpful and important because under our current regs, maybe soon to be previous, but at least the current regs, you took total number of uh, seating and you just kind of shifted it around inside and out, but it was somewhat the same seating. Now, under the current regs, that, that limitation kind of isn't there. You could have, if you had a hundred seats inside, you know, under the current regs, you could move them outside, but it had to still be a hundred. Now it's, well, actually, maybe you can get two hundred, one, a hundred inside, a hundred outside. And it's important for, for what you said, because if that's the experience, that's helpful for us to know. Um, but theoretically, I guess, there could be two hundred if, if, you know, site-specific and kitchen-specific and all that stuff.
Without a doubt, the, 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 this would create the opportunity for potential more total seats, uh, in, in total. That is, that is absolutely true.
I mean, we want to make note of that and keep records of it because, uh, if we're adding seats and capacity, which I'm not suggesting is a bad thing, but I'm just noting that that's what the impact will be. We may need to be watching the public, uh, for parking because if it does have an effect that we're not expecting because our current regulations keep the total capacity as is, now we're potentially adding capacity, I could see how that could impact parking. That just makes logical sense, whether it actually happens. Whether it happens, you know, isn't, that's what actually happens practically is, you know, is not for me because I, I don't have that kind of evidence. But I throw that out there because that's, that caught my attention as to what could happen. Any other members of the commission? Okay. Mr. Barnhart, uh, could, uh, we'll move on to, um, public comments, um, if any other comes up, I guess there's rebuttal. There is rebuttal, excuse me. I see that, uh, Attorney Joel Green has signed up, uh, again, to any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter. If you can either sign in with the chat or after I've gone through the people that have signed up in the chat, I will make an announcement.
Mr. Chair, if you just, uh, remind us who are calling in on the phone, um, if you need to unmute yourself to announce that you'd like to speak, please just press star six on your phone.
Thank you. Attorney Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Joel, for the record, Joel Green, I live at fifty-two Stonely Road. First and foremost, I want to thank the Economic Development Commission and, uh, Mark Barnhart for all of your efforts. And then I think it's a, um, laudable and important goal to support local restaurants, and I think it's a great idea. Uh, the thing I would suggest is that the commission exercise some care. Uh, the thing I would suggest is that the commission exercise some care in. Uh, adopting this regulation and maybe, uh, that we take just a slightly deeper look into the potential impacts and sort of granting this on a blanket basis. Um, I mean, initially I think it's a great idea, but when I started thinking about it. I started thinking of individual restaurants and I'll try not to name them. But I can think of so many restaurants that are over capacity right now in terms of you can never get a parking space there. And, uh. I mean, for example, if you've ever tried to go to Two Post Road or Craft 260 is on a weekend evening, you can't get near that parking lot. There's unfortunately, or however you want to couch it, they got a number of variances. So they're restaurant heavy there. You can't get near that. Now, I don't know if they have capacity for more outdoor dining space or not, but, um, I look at something like that. I look at a place that's near and dear to me, uh, and I won't name it, a certain, uh. Tex Mex place at the circle. Uh, and if you, if you try to, and their food is excellent and their go food is excellent, but they have some lawn area outside. And they have about eight park or 10 parking spaces for the whole place. And, uh, if you have tried going to the, you know, the center of the universe, uh, that I'll call, uh, Malta or Malibu Taco or. Metta or the ice cream place in the back on a night when, uh, the funeral home has a service. I mean, you, you can really drive to find a parking space and I, I just offer these. And I'm not, and by the way, I think this is an interesting idea and I once again think we should be supporting restaurants. But maybe we can design this regulation in a manner that doesn't, um. Exacerbate places where there is a parking problem already. And, uh, the other thing I will comment on is that we really have not had an environment in over two years now where we've had full. What I'm going to call full attractive indoor capacity and outdoor capacity. And I think last summer, things began to ease up, but I know a lot of folks had reservations about going into restaurants. And I doubt that restaurants were doing full indoor capacity, uh, while they were certainly, it was a robust demand for outdoor dining. So, uh, I hate to, I know a lot of work has been done on this already and I'm. It's kind of like, as I've said before, it's kind of like saying to the winner of the pie eating contest, your prize is more pie. Do more research on this. But, uh. But I can't help but feel that, uh, this needs just a, a little bit of a, of a closer analysis and asking restaurant. Operators whether they'd like more seating capacity outdoors, asking them in March or whenever, uh, whether they'd like more outdoor seating capacity. In fairness, I can kind of predict the outcome of that poll. Uh, so, uh. I'm just suggesting that maybe rather than granting this sort of blanket relaxation. Maybe a little bit more of an analysis can be done so that maybe there's some trade off either for some indoor space. Or, uh, or it only applies in certain areas or, um, properties that have a certain level of parking capacity available. Either on a shared basis or, or robust street parking. And, uh, you know, I was struck by, uh, Commissioner Francis's comment, there are times downtown, uh, when you can't. Get, you can't get near a parking space at certain times downtown. And my experience appearing before you and before the zoning board of appeals is everyone says, well, there's a lot at Sherman Green. And that always seems to be the comment. And everybody seems to be using a lot of Sherman Green, uh, restaurants. So I know I've spoken too long, but I think you get the idea of what I'm suggesting. And, and again, I'm conflicted on this because I do think we need to support restaurants. But I'm just not sure that this blanket approach is necessarily good. For anyone involved, including restaurants where people may say, you know, I can't go near that place because I can never get a parking space. So that's all. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I don't see anybody in chat, so I will ask, uh, any members of the public who are listening in, wish to be heard. If you are on your phone and you need to unmute yourself, it is star six. Any members of the public wish to be heard on these regulation amendments? Going once. Twice. Uh, and the public comment portion of this meeting. Um, Mr. Barnhart, just, I'll, I'll, it's rebuttal time, so to speak, and I'll just pose this question to you. It, if the commission felt that, you know, uh. An integral step is needed. Um. Either, you know, because the, the 550s, the 575 square footage is too much. Or maybe not three quarters. It's, I don't know, uh, seven eighths or something, you know, kind of like that. But some kind of an incremental approach to see what the. Impact is. Do you have any thoughts as to? What would be better? Uh, is the, which, is there a, an amendment that, um, you would prefer seeing and don't care about the other one? Or if you're gonna, no, keep the three fourths. I'd like that, but you know, go to 350, for example, square footage. Um, if we decided to do somewhat of an incremental step, just to see what the impact was before. We went up to these proposals, you have thoughts as to, you know, suggestions as to what maybe the integral step, interval step would be, excuse me, interval step would be. And, you know, something along those lines.
Uh, sure. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Um. Uh, first, I, I would just, uh, would be, uh, remiss if I didn't say that we've had the benefit of, uh, two years worth of analysis, real world analysis. And, and I, uh, respect the fact that for a period of that time, maybe, uh, you could argue that, uh, you know, things weren't. Uh, altogether normal where people were opting to, uh, to dine in, they were opting to carry out or dine out rather than dine inside a restaurant. But that was not true for the entirety of that period of time. And still we had had something actually much more aggressive, uh, in terms of its impact. Um, that's been in place for the last several years without really any, um, negative impacts. I, I understand that there are times where, uh, folks may not be able to find a parking space close to a restaurant or business of their, of their choice. And, and, uh, that I think makes the, uh, some argument, uh. That would suggest that it, it's, it's a bit self-regulated. If you can't find a parking space, you're going to simply move on to another business, another restaurant to, to, to dine there. Um, I think the point that Mr. Went made earlier, it's been our observation as well. Um, you know, when it's a nice day, people opt to sit and dine outside. Uh, when it's raining, uh, you know, that's not going to be an attractive choice. So people are going to, uh, choose to dine in the restaurant. Uh, so again, there are aspects of this that, that do tend to regulate or mitigate the impact there. Um, to your question as to what would be the more impactful, I think, you know, certainly, I think we should have a more liberal view as to what a season is. I, I don't think that we should define what the dining season is in any, in any shape. So, um, you know, it, it, we have had, uh, not too long ago, this past week, we had a 70 degree, 70 degree, uh, day in, in March. And people want to sit outside and eat. I don't see any harm to, to allowing them to do that. Um, after that, then I would, I would suggest that the parking, uh, where we can currently allow for 150 square feet. Increasing that, uh, to, uh, 575 square feet would be the, the second most impactful thing. And we didn't, uh, again, we looked at the existing approved temporary dining locations, uh, that are currently in place. Uh, some of which obviously take into account or, or utilize existing parking lots to create those spaces. And the average, uh, was over a thousand square feet. Um, the, the midpoint was, was closer to the 575 that we're suggesting the median. So we took the more conservative approach with respect to that, rather than suggesting that you go to the average size. Because, you know, these are, uh, extraordinary in the sense that we're under the temporary provisions that, uh, the governor. And, and others allowed were permitting restaurants to use parking spaces, uh, to create these outdoor dining locations. And that's not part of our proposal here, as was pointed out earlier. So, you know, as to, you know, whether or not you, uh, want to. A pick and choose or reduce some of these to some degree, that's clearly, um, you know, at, at, within your discretion. Um, I think, you know, the definition of a, of a dining season, uh, should be, um. To me, it's a no brainer. Uh, after that, then I think the, the more impactful would be the, um, allowance for, uh, parking with, uh, or allowance for outdoor dining. Without creating additional off-street parking for the reasons stated. And then, uh, the three quarter rule, uh, that to me, uh, impacts a smaller subset of restaurants. And again, uh, I think what minimizes the impact there is that, uh, most of the sites, uh, where we might envision outdoor dining. Uh, to occur probably wouldn't accommodate, uh, expansion to the degree that, that perhaps some folks might, might envision or be fearful of. So I, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission have questions for Mr. Barnhart? If not, I'll close the hearing. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close this, uh, hearing on this application. Thank you, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you.
Next, and I think final item is 1609 Fairfield Beach Road Special Exception and Coastal Site Plan Application of Gregory Sargent. Tending to the demolition and reconstruction of a single family dwelling in the beach district.
Is Mr. Sergeant or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Greg Sargent. I'm the owner of and applicant for 1609 Fairfield Beach Road. I am looking for. A special exception consistent with regulation 11.4. Which reads in part. As to a lot in one ownership which contains more than one dwelling. One or more buildings in place of such existing dwellings. And containing no more than the existing number of housing units as contained in such dwellings may be erected. Subject to all other requirements imposed by these beach district regulations. And subject to securing a special exception from the town planning and zoning commission. So that's where you step in. Um, my wife and I are grateful owners of a lot on Fairfield Beach Road that has two homes. One is a 1940s cottage along the road that was renovated approximately 10 years ago. It was picked up, um, and made zoning and at the time FEMA compliant. The second structure. Is an older beach house dating from the late, late 1890s. It is neither zoning or FEMA compliant. And that is what the special exception we're looking for today. To renovate, to tear down and build a new zoning and FEMA compliant home. This particular application you're seeing right now is not the first time that I've presented before a town board. Approximately two and a half years ago. I petitioned the ZBA. Uh, for a variance to 11.1.1. Because of course the beach district is a zoned, a single family, and I have two homes. And so I was advised at that time to get a variance for, uh, 11.1.1 to rebuild my existing beach house. And so I, uh, petitioned the ZBA. And was unanimously approved. But along the way, my neighbors to the west. Uh, objected to my application. Uh, specifically because if you happen to look at my A2, the southeastally corner of my house. Is closer to the mean high water than the south westerly corner of my house. And I was advised by the zoning department and by the, uh, surveyor that the town allow me to. Take the closest point to the mean high watermark and make my home straight against the sound. The neighbors to the west objected to the placement of that. Saying that I was not allowed to take the closest point to the mean high water. And so, uh. Subsequent to my approval by the ZBA, they sued the town, uh, and was put before the court. Last year, the court, without ruling on the merits of the case. Said that my approach to getting approval to rebuild my house with a variance to 11.1.1 was an inappropriate path. Instead directed me to come to you and get the special exception. Through 11.4. So that's why I'm doing this all over again. I should say that the application before you right now. Is the exact same application put in front of the ZBA except for cosmetic. Uh, exterior changes. I moved some windows. But as far as a zoning department sees it, the footprint, the coverage, the setbacks are all exactly the same. What they saw, you are seeing. No material differences have been made. Okay, so the zoning department has deemed this application zoning compliant twice before the ZBA hearing and now put before you. If it wasn't deemed zoning compliant, then I would have to get variances to do whatever it is that, uh, this application is asking for. I might also add that the ZBA. Had a discussion about. Whether it's appropriate to have my south westerly wall moved forward to match my southeastally wall. I mean, I read this into the record. This is one member speaking to the chairman. And the member asked the chairman, so is it appropriate to move the house to the closest point or not? And the chairman responded, and I quote. In my opinion, it is in. I think you understood my question is that you, we go from the setback from that closest line. That's how I personally interpret the zoning regulations. The member responds, so are you saying that Attorney Green's argument is incorrect? And the chairman said in response. I think you can. I can understand how someone can interpret that. I don't agree with that interpretation. The member asks, you don't agree with Attorney Green? And the chairman said. In my experience, I can see how someone could say that because they're saying from the front, from the front of the building. And you measure from that first, the closest line. That's the setback. So there was a specific dialogue amongst members on the ZBA discussing. How the setback to on sound is considered. And it was decided, as I mentioned unanimously, that the ZBA approved that these, the application is put before them. And now the same one put before you is zoning compliant. I might also add that after the, I received the variance to rebuild. And after my neighbor sued the town zoning board of appeals, I had an email conversation with my surveyor. And the surveyor happens to be the same one of the neighbor to my west who sued the town. And I asked the. Uh, surveyor, a prominent surveyor in town. I'm having some problems actually getting this proposal approved and built because the set, because of setback issues. Can you please tell me what the existing one on sound setbacks are now in my current structure? I see my easterly setback is 115.6. What is my westerly setback? He responds, the westerly existing setback is 117.8 because the house is twisted. Who is giving you a hard time? "It was giving you a hard time. Planning and zoning should not be, as the proposed house is no closer to the closest point to the mean high water." I responded, "P&amp;Z is not giving me a hard time. I went to the ZBA and designed my footprint just as you surveyed and as the zoning department instructed me that I'm allowed to do. My neighbors to the west objected to my westerly portion of my house being swung forward to match my easterly setback. They have sued the town, saying that I'm not allowed to make that, to take the closest setback. That I have to work with the existing cockeyed front wall, or if I want to make a house straight, move my easterly point back to match my westerly setback point." The surveyor responds, "I have never heard of anyone taking that position before. And the fact that the town has approved the plan should help you in the suit." Okay, so we have the three main bodies of town that a normal person trying to build a house goes through, all on the same page. The zoning department twice, the ZBA, the chairman of the ZBA, even supposedly saying he said he takes the point. And the surveyor is saying, "I have never seen this before, that we always use the closest point to the mean high water." If that wasn't enough, what I find most disturbing about this contentious relationship that I'm having with my neighbor is that my neighbor had a very similar property to mine just two years ago. And they petitioned the ZBA and received a variance to tear down their older beach structure, just like I'm petitioning you right now. And if you make, I'll make note that if in the packet of the documents that Emeline gave to you, there is a ZBA sign-off sheet that shows that I reviewed their plans and I signed off and approved their plans after having reviewed them. Okay, there's only one signature on that page. It is mine. But what is significant about their proposal from two years ago is that their structure was cockeyed just like mine. Their westerly wall was 119.5 setback from the mean high water. Their easterly wall is 119.2, so slightly off. And the Town Zoning Department allowed them to move to the closest point to the mean high water, the closest setback. So the argument that they're making that I may not move to my closest setback from the high water is disingenuous. They just completed their project last year and moved the front wall of their structure to the closest point of the mean high water. So I think you need to take their arguments against my project with a huge grain of salt, considering that they just did the exact same thing that I am asking to do. I'm asking for nothing more than equality under the law. And I humbly ask you for your approval, and I'm open to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Any members of, I see Commissioner Braun.
Hi. I was reading through your material as well as, I guess the opposition submitted some material today. I didn't get a chance to read it thoroughly. I was wondering if you could address some of the comments that they made. One of the comments was, and I'm trying to look at your plans to figure out the dates. If your plans are several years old, how do we know exactly where mean high water is now versus two or three years ago? It does change over time. And also, do you have in your plans a drawing which compares the exact location of their current building versus, do we have that? Can you point out where that is versus your building? Where your proposed building is and where your existing building is, as well as comparing that to where they're? Apparently, they built a building last year, or they moved their house or whatever last year. Do we have something here showing where yours is in relation to their current one, or is that based on the old one? I'm confused because the plans are, they appear to be dated starting 2009 and then updated to 2019, but I don't see anything dated like today or, you know, recently.
Commissioner, I think if you look at the A2 survey submitted by the town to you, the latest survey was dated January 21st of 2022, so just about, you know, two months ago. And if you look at that A2 survey, you'll see the footprint of my proposed house relative to my existing house right now. And that has not changed now or two and a half years ago in front of the ZBA.
So I guess somebody has to explain to me how plans work because I have a location survey. Which document are you referring to? I'm looking at the proposed master package, the Huntington, is this the Huntington Company?
Yes, correct.
The date it was done originally says October 13th, 2009, and then there's a bunch of updated dates. But when they add updated, they say what they did at each date. I assume the pre-existing site conditions are on the original date. I don't know. Somebody needs to explain that to me. So I, so I understand where mean high water is noted, that's current. That's not from the old plan before it was updated.
Okay, so I cannot speak on behalf of the surveyors specifically, but I will say that the surveyors have been my property many times over the 20-plus years I own the property. And so every time I do have anything, if anything of significance, then they do send someone to the field to take measurements. But just stating the obvious, a survey is a snapshot in time, and it's always a snapshot in time. If you measured tomorrow, it would be different than today, just because of the nature of the waterfront that we're on.
And then in terms of the neighboring house that we're, that's complaining, they're, are they? You're at 1609, right?
Yes.
They're at 1623. Are they? Which direction are they? When you're facing the ocean, the left or the right?
The right.
Right, okay.
If you're facing the water, maybe the right, they are immediately to my west.
Okay, so is their house shown on any of these plans? Because one of their things they're talking about is the visual, I guess, that the new plans you have would affect their visual, you know, their view, I guess, of the ocean. And I don't, I don't see where their, the dimensions of their building in relation to your building or know if one of their, I'm asking you to really basically address some of the questions they had that I read in their material in your main presentation, just so I could understand it better. Does, does your plan show where their house is now or where their house used to be before they rebuilt it?
I think the preferred location for you to look would be like on their survey. And you'll see their as-built survey dated April 13th of 2021, last year, last April. You'll see their new construction placed relative to our mutual property line.
Where is that? Is that here in your materials or is that in the other side's material?
That should be in my materials submitted to the town and the commission.
So.
Improvement Location Survey, in a lower right-hand corner, it says Castellian Miller.
Maybe you could tell me what page it is, so that might be, or like, I'm scrolling down.
Emeline, can you help me out there? I have no access to the stuff.
Oh.
Just gonna get that on screen in just a second. I'd rather find it in the PDF and then I'll share the screen.
Thank you.
I might add, while, while she's digging around for the A2 survey, it should be noted that their new construction moved their house to my property, our shared property line closer, so that as, of course, you expand the house and move off of that setback, side yard setback to their west, they're going to move closer to my structure. And so naturally, no matter what size structure I put up, their view will become more impinged by any kind of new construction.
Did they move their house closer to the ocean than your house is now, or I'm a little confused about that?
No problem. No, they moved their clo, their house to the closest point they could to the mean high water. So their one corner, their westerly corner, was pushed forward. Their easterly corner, which is already at the closest point, they maintained. And then they moved that wall, that easterly wall, closer to our mutual property line. So that is in large part, no matter what I do with my structure, they're going to lose view because they move closer to the property line. If their properties, or their building is swung all the way to the opposite side, they have a sweeping view of the sound.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna share your, your survey. I think on their survey, it's there, I have Joel Green's materials, but I don't, I don't, I, well, I guess I can get it off the. I guess let's start with your survey, if that's what you prefer, because you can actually see their house as well on the edge of this. If you can see this survey, is that helpful, Greg?
I would suggest that their structure right there refers to the older house.
How do we tell?
Well, I mean, I would keep in mind too that for their proposed house, they're required to keep the same water-facing elevation, so they can't get closer to the water either. So they would be the same location. Even if it's not, is, even if it's not showing the exact width of the, of the new house, it should be showing the line.
I agree with you there, Emeline. I would just say that, of course, their wall comes closer to me, so
Yeah.
that is why it affects their view, because they're moving closer to the property line.
I think, if I may, I think, and I think in the supplemental materials, not, not the materials we received today, but before that, I think in the supplemental materials, it's not linked. It's, it's on, it's in our file.
Okay, I'll get it.
The Castelli as-built may be, may have been part of that.
Did we put it in the project file under?
Yes, the supplement, there's a supplemental link and a link to Attorney Green's materials under that tab.
Okay. Sorry about the delay on that one. There we go.
Is this the same thing that was in our, the link in our agenda, or is this from the email?
No, this, this material came in after we put the, the agenda out.
Okay, so I think, I think, Greg, this is the proposed, and then this one should be the as-built.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm confused. One says Fairfield Beach Road on the left, and one says Long Island Sound on the left. It looks like there's two parts, this, this property has two buildings on it. One is a garage with a cottage on top of it. It looks like the bottom half of that is showing that, and the top half of this drawing is showing the house you're renovating or reconstructing. It looks like this would be a left-right type of plan.
Yeah, this, this is a map of the neighbor's property, and the piece on the top is the Long Island Sound side, and the piece on the bottom is the creeks, is the, is the creek side.
Do they have two buildings also on their parcel?
They do.
Oh, you both do?
Yes.
Do you both have a garage with a cottage over it and a building of the main residence on the ocean side? I thought this was yours. Now I see it's not yours, it's theirs. Okay. So how do we see where your house is in relation, is this, so this is their plan? This is their approved plan? Is this the as-built? I can't, it says.
Yeah, this is the as-built. On the top half of the drawing is the, you can see the footprint of Castelli House, and then below it, you can see the edge, the footprint of where the existing house is on the applicant, this applicant's property.
So it looks like they're, oh, I see, the bigger square is the one with a little crosshatching? That's the outline of their house? Or is that their property? Oh.
Greg, can you go back to your property now, or?
If the commissioner has more questions, I'm happy to go back, but I.
This is all in the material, right? So we can look at it at our leisure later, I guess, also.
Yes, it is in the materials.
I'm just, just to clarify, the plan you just pulled up, was that in this file or the neighbor's file from like a year ago?
There were two portions of the materials that were sent to you. There was the, the initial portion, that is the main link that's in the agenda. And then you were sent a follow-up email with supplemental materials from the applicant. And then you were also sent a separate email with materials from Attorney Joel Green.
Thank you. Mr. Sargent, so the other question that was raised was something about the setbacks. Five feet versus six feet versus others, and that had something to do with the average width of your property. Could you explain that a little bit? Are you, are you reducing the setbacks from where it is now or increasing the setbacks from where it is now?
Quite frankly, I'm not sure what Mr. Green is talking about when he presents that documentation. He only used half my surveyed property. So while his data is correct for the beach side, half of my property, it is not correct for my whole property. Just like you saw the survey of my neighbor right there, they have the Long Island Sound side, and they have the creek side. I have the exact same kind of property. So the setbacks, I, I don't know what he's talking about. He's not, he's not using the creek side property. The amount of square footage, he's not including the creek side property. His data is wrong.
Are you changing the setbacks from where they are now to where they are proposed in the new building?
I am, because my existing building is neither zoning nor FEMA compliant. I have approximately two feet to my neighbor to the, to the east. And so I'm increasing that setback. I'd have to look at exactly what it is, something like 10 maybe. And my setback to the west will be approximately six, six to the structure when code is five.
So you're, you're saying that you're increasing the setback on both the side setbacks?
No, the collective will be slightly narrower, but the structure will be more centered in the property. And my house is going from a current 35 feet wide to a 40-foot wide. So I'm losing five feet in total of setback when that is a very, very modest increase given the size of my lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the commission have questions? Mr. Wentz, I assume the plans as provided at least meet staff's approval as to the technical measurements, setbacks, and things alike. Is that accurate?
Yes, that, that is our opinion. I haven't had a chance to fully digest all of the material that we received late this afternoon from, from Mr. Green, but we'll have a more depth opportunity to do that when we look at this. But, but yes, it's our opinion that what's proposed is in compliance.
We've seen, I think, this issue with respect to setbacks from the mean high tide and calculations from it. Is that accurate? We've seen this before, I think, right?
Yes, and in, you know, the reference to the ZBA chairman's comments, I think, reflect that too. The language in the regulation refers to the front wall of the building to distinguish it from any projection that might be beyond that front wall, like a deck or untempered porch space. So it's been our consistent interpretation and implementation of that rule is where it says the front wall, it's the actual house. If there was a second-story deck that projected closer to the water than the wall of the house, they didn't, upon demolition, you couldn't move the, the whole house to the, you know, the, the point to which the deck projected. But it would be, that's why the, the term "wall of the house" is in there. So, but, but I, we agree, and it was our opinion, and we agree with the, the surveyor's opinion. You know, the setback You know, the setback is measured from the closest point. It's not measured on, along a plane. It's from the closest point of the building to mean high water. So the rotation of the house, approximately five feet on that one corner. While, while it's true that, 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 that corner is getting a little closer to mean high water than it is presently, it's still not closer to mean high water than the, than the closest point. So we agree, we agree with the interpretation as it was explained.
And and I, if you haven't fully digested it, because I haven't as well, from Attorney Green, one of his initial uh, arguments is technical arguments as to dates of plans and seals and things like that. Um, any preliminary thoughts or should we, is that something?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at that in, in depth. But again, I agree, I understand the, the, the argument with respect to the setbacks, which we respectfully disagree with. Uh, I haven't had a chance to look at the other.
Okay. Any other members of the commission have questions?
Mr. Wentz, could you explain the mean high water rule? Again, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, the regulation says that the, the, you basically have to hold the existing setback that you have now. You can't encroach closer to the water than the existing house. In, in, in this case, the existing wall of the house is not parallel to the mean high water line. So the proposed house is, so a portion of the the corner, just in absolute terms, I, I don't, I don't have the map in front of me, but say one corner is 100 feet away and the other is 102. The setback is established by the closest point, 100 feet. So they're rotating the house, so the entirety of the house is at 100 feet. So a portion of it is getting closer, but none of it is getting closer than the closest existing point.
And is, what's the rule about how far you have to be from mean high water to begin with?
Is, it's established by your closest, uh, the existing setback.
So if you're building a new house, you wouldn't follow that rule, obviously. You'd have to follow some other rule about how far away you have to be from mean high water?
No, it's established by the setback that existed at the date of adoption of the regulations.
So what is that setback then?
Well, it's, it's represented by the existing, the closest point that exists today. So if you've got 100 feet today and you demolish the house, your, your closest point can't be any closer than 100 feet.
So if you're building a new house where there's nothing there, what, how far away do you have to build just?
If, if, if the lot were vacant at the date of the adoption of the regulations, then that's established by the line drawn between the two adjacent structures. But that's not the case here. We have an existing house that's there today. And so they, upon demolition, get to maintain the same setback that is there presently.
And if the, if there were no houses nearby, what's the rule about how far you can build from the mean high water period?
Again, it's not, the only, the only time a, the adjacent house is relevant is if the lot were vacant in 1989, when the, the regulations were adopted. If, if there was a house there at the date of adoption of the regulations, that's the, that's the line in the sand, if you will, you can't get closer. Even if your adjacent houses are closer to the water than you, you still can't encroach closer to the water.
But isn't there a rule that about, I'm trying to figure out, is there a rule about how far anybody can build from the ocean at all?
Well, there's, there's.
Was there before?
There's an absolute minimum, but in no case shall the setback be less than 25 feet.
So that, so this is farther away than that?
It is.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I misinterpreted your question.
All right.
Any other member of the commission have questions? Opening presentation. Okay. Um, so we'll close this portion of, um, the application, we'll move to public comments. Um, Mr. Wentz and Ms. Harrigan, the one thing that jumps to mind after at least perusing Attorney Green's comments is, and I'd like you to both to think, because there are some technical things, he mentioned dates or a seal or something like that, things like that. If it's worth, the question I have for you to consider, I'll, we'll go on to public comment, is, is it worth keeping public comment open? If there is something as technical as a seal that's missing, that can be done. Mr. Sergeant is self-represented, trying to balance the, the fact that he's self-represented with technical requirements, giving some flexibility. I just, if you could think about that while we go to public comment and if that's worthwhile or if it's, if it is not.
Okay, yeah, I think I'll have a better opportunity to respond to that once I hear what, uh, Mr. Green has to say and then we can take it from there.
So moving into public comments, I see Attorney Green, um, and I saw that he had submitted a opposition memorandum. And to any other members of the public who wish to be heard, if you can please sign up in the chat function. Uh, I will also make an announcement, um, if you do not sign up in the chat. Um, and we'll save, I'll remind every, if you're on phone calls, star six to unmute yourself and myself and Ms. Harrigan will remind that when the time comes. Uh, Attorney Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice on Richburg, the law offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Barbara Bertozzi Castelli and Jose Mueller, who are the owners of the premises at 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. So, um, I have to make some comments just in response to some comments by the applicant and I, and I make these with all due respect and obviously it's unfortunate when, uh, as you see too many times when neighbors can't resolve, um, some of their issues, but, uh, I really have to take issue with some of the comments by the applicant. Much as I have a deep respect for Attorney Coyne, the chairman of the zoning board of appeals and for Jason Spaff of the Huntington Company, and I hold them both in high esteem. They are not ultimately the arbiters or interpreters of the zoning regulations for purposes of this commission. So I just have to put that out there. Similarly, I think, uh, that the applicant, uh, doesn't fully understand the import of the decision by the court on the zoning appeal and he keeps, uh, uh, we took an appeal from the ruling by the ZBA granting a variance. It was our position that there was no hardship. And the court found that there was no hardship because the applicant has a remedy under the zoning regulations to file an application for a special exception as the applicant has done in this instance. So, uh, the court went through that analysis and found that the, um, applicant has an adequate remedy at law being a application for a special exception. And that's why we're here. My clients report to me, and I have not studied this as to their properties, that, um, they did in fact, uh, get a variance that they indicated pertained to, I believe, the height of their, um, structure, but it, they report that their structure, um, complies with the face of the original structure that is on the property and is otherwise, and is fully zoning compliant in terms of its setbacks, its side yard setbacks and the like. So I just wanted to correct those, not that they're of any, uh, great moment or any great import, but just to clarify the record. So, uh, I, in order to sort of guide the commission, I, I was creating an outline for my presentation to the commission and I decided to just put it in the form of a memo so that the commission could see basically and have my arguments in writing before it. And I talk about the standards for review of an application for a special exception. And in this instance, what, what your, the regulations require is in this instance where you have two dwellings existing on the property on the date that the beach district regulations were adopted in 1989. It says that after that date, you can establish the same number of dwellings in separate buildings subject to, first of all, complying with the beach district regulations and also, um, complying with the special exception requirements under the zoning regulations. So you have to both meet all those sort of hard standards being a setback height, uh, and that coverage and that sort of thing. But you also have to satisfy the special exception standards, which talk about the location type, character, size and use and buildings and structures such that they're in harmony and conform to the appropriate orderly development of the town and development of the neighborhood. And also that, uh, they won't discourage appropriate development and the use of adjacent property or impair its value. And it's our position that this application has to be denied because it does not meet what I'll call the, the hard standards being the setbacks. But also it doesn't meet the requirements for a special exception in a number of respects. But before we even get to that, and I know that the commission is already, um, fixed on that, uh, first of all, the, the improvement location survey that the applicant is relying on was first created 10 years ago. And the data pertaining to mean high water was, uh, is, is three years old. And it was actually Jason Spaff who told me that the location of mean high water changes every 12 hours. Because obviously the sands shift after storms. If there's a lot of sand deposited on the beach, then it reduces the size of the lot because mean high water moves closer in. And similarly, if a lot of sand is taken away and the site is sent, is essentially excavated by the tide, then that elevation moves further away and lots are larger. And this happens frequently. And, uh, so, so it's a constantly moving standard and obviously you can't run out every day and get it and get it on, for example, the day of the hearing or necessarily the exact date of the application. But the point is, uh, this data is three years old. We've had a lot of storms, we've had a lot of activity. And, uh, so these, these drawings, uh, really are not accurate for 2022. If I can, uh, borrow the screen, uh, it would be helpful and I can, uh, call up some documents that I need.
You're fine to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Attorney Green, I mean, do we know that the data is inaccurate?
I mean. Well, I can, I can show you how, how I came to that conclusion.
Thank you.
So, um, the first item I'm calling up is this is actually the survey that is referenced in the deed pursuant to which the applicant acquired title to their property. And I call, I call the commission's attention and, and you know, this is sort of a hand-drawn document by the Huntington Company. And the thing that I just wanted to bring to the, uh, commission's attention is you'll see the mean high water line. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but, uh, you'll see that the, the mean high water line, it says approximate mean high water line. And you'll see it sort of, even, even at this point, it wasn't a, what I'll call a straight line. It had some curves and some relief in it. And that recognizes that you're basically measuring the height of sand. So, uh, so that's the first document. The next. Yes, it is. I submitted it, uh, today. The next document is, I want to show you is, uh, you'll just bear with me.
I assume what you're showing us is, uh, because I saw a bunch of tabs, uh, all of it's been submitted in the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, of course, I've lost, uh, the document that I need. I must have closed it out. Just bear with me.
Which one are you trying to get to? And I can pull it up on the screen.
I got it.
You got it? Okay.
I got it, yeah. Okay. So I don't know if, am I fully sharing my screen at this moment?
Not sharing.
Okay, here we go. So I, I have a feeling that the Huntington Company did not have an opportunity to complete this document because what you can see, first of all, it was not signed and it was not stamped. And it says, it specifically says, and unless it's, uh, stamped and sealed, that it can't be relied on. But the thing that I will point out to the commission is that virtually all of the contours, uh, along the water are perfectly straight. And the coastal jurisdiction line is perfectly straight. And the mean high water line is perfectly straight. And perfectly straight just simply does not exist in, in, in this condition and in this place, uh, as it's shown. And this, uh, and just, um, in response to Attorney Bronze, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bronze, uh, inquiry, you'll see, uh, right here and right here. You'll see, it says 32619. So these, these elevations were established in March of 2019, three years ago. So that's how I came to that, uh, analysis. Now, uh, when I call up, this is the site plan. And did your screen change to the next document?
It did.
Okay, so here I am showing you, um, the, um, zoning location survey for my client's property from February of 2019. So this is also three years ago. And I draw this for you because you can see that there's, there's some relief built into this. And I can tell you that there's a six foot difference in the location of mean high water, some one month apart between these drawings. So that's why I included that, uh, drawing in with my presentation. So I believe that the Huntington Company drawing was not completed, uh, in, in whatever, whenever it was last, uh, provided to the applicant and it's not embossed and it's not signed. And my suspicion is that the, uh, the mean high water and coastal jurisdiction lines were not accurately plotted at that time. Now, the reason this is important is because, uh, well, I'll get into it shortly, but, um, there are calculations of lot area and there are calculations of lot, uh, total building lot coverage as a percentage of lot area that are included in the application. And unless you have an accurate calculation of the lot area, then obviously those percentages, uh, cannot be, uh, calculated. Now, I'm going to actually jump ahead a bit, uh, to another argument because I think it's topical right now. So going back to, going back to, uh, the, the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, you'll see that the average lot width here and here, submitted by the applicant, shows it as 49.97 feet. Now, the reason this is important is because the width of the lot, as you can see from our memo, affects the amount of setback from the side yard. And one of the delineations is 50 feet. So for lots up to 50 feet, between 40 and 50 feet in width, the, uh, total, the cumulative setbacks are, uh, 20 feet for a lot. Meaning that, uh, a lot must have cumulative side yard setbacks of 20% of the lot width. So if it is 50 feet. So if it is 50 feet, then you have to have 20 feet of, I'm sorry, you have to have 10 feet of cumulative side yard setback on the lot. If however, the lot is 50.01 feet or, or more, then you have to have 33% or at, at 50.01 feet, you have to have just over 15 feet of cumulative setback for your buildings. And the applicant doesn't have 15 feet of cumulative setback. Now, we disagree as to the method of calculation of the width of the lot. But my point is, the applicant is claiming that it comes under that standard by three one hundredths of an inch. So if this lot were four one hundredths of an inch wider, average lot width, then it would change the setback requirements and the location of the applicant's structure, as the applicant shows it, would be zoning compliant, zoning noncompliant. It would not comply with the zoning regulations. Now, we disagree with the applicant's claim. Oh, well, let me just throw this in right at this moment. I did a calculation so that if mean high water is two feet lower or two feet, actually the lot, it's two feet further away, then the applicant shows it just two feet. Then the applicant, by their method of calculation, their average lot width goes over 50 feet. And I did that calculation. So that's why the precise location of mean high water drives, based on the applicant's method of calculation, the, with the setback that's required. Now, we believe that the applicant misstated the lot area in another respect. And that is that the definition of lot area in your, in Fairfield zoning regulations excludes rights of way and roads, such as Fairfield Beach Road. And it excludes paved areas. And we note that the measurement that the Huntington Company used went to the center of the road here to determine this distance. And it's our position that the measurement should have only been to the edge of the paved area of the road and should not include this area. So it's our position then that, that lot, again, lot area has been miscalculated. That, and I, once again, you exclude paved areas, you exclude roads, rights of way, and we have that definition, the lot area definition, which is set back in 31.2.21 of the regulations, says lot area in shape. And it'll be in determining compliance with the minimum lot area and shape requirements of the zoning regulations. It says no street or highway may be included. It also says that all contributing portions of a lot for purposes of minimum lot area shall be contiguous. So that means that everything, everything beyond this boundary line with Fairfield Beach Road, everything on the other side of the road does not count in terms of calculating lot area because it is not contiguous. It's separated by Fairfield Beach Road, so it doesn't count. So when we calculated the lot width, and if you think about it, it makes sense. And this is a particular illustration of why it makes sense. We calculated the average lot width of the contiguous portion of the lot. Now, I have Steve Trinkus of Trinkus Engineering is with us tonight. And I would like to call on him briefly to describe his method of calculation. Steve had produced a letter that is in, that we submitted into the record. And I'd like to call on Steve and I can, I'm happy to put his letter up M line or you can, however you, whatever you please.
Up to you.
Readly available.
Do you want to go ahead or do you want me to do it?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Steve Trinkus, for the record, I'm a licensed professional engineer in Southbury, Connecticut. While I've been a PE since 88, in my early years during college and right after college, I worked for a licensed land surveyor, John Fuller, out of Georgetown for an aggregate of about 10 years. So I did a lot of surveying. In looking at the average width of the lot, and we only looked at the side that's on the, the beach side of Fairfield Beach Road, because the line is in the center line. And there was actually a survey I was involved with years ago in Uplaud Road in Reading, where there were two parcels, you know, to the center line, measured to the center line of the road. One had the main house, the other one had an accessory structure. And the parcel opposite the main house was not a two acre lot, which was in Reading. That was a minimum zone, but it was less than that. And it was held that because the road, the property went to the center line, that they were two separate parcels. And therefore, the accessory piece, it was only like an acre, could be sold separately from the main house. So this scenario is the same here. You have basically the larger parcel on the beach side and this very narrow strip across the street. So what I did was, starting on the northeast corner of the lot, I drew a line that would be then perpendicular to the western property line. And I simply offset it at 25 foot intervals going back down to the beach. And then measured each of the lines. There were a total of 11 of the cross sections. And, you know, you came up with an average lot area of 58 point, I believe, 42 feet, which is substantially larger than 49.97 feet. If you took cross sections at a closer interval, even down to 10 foot, you'd probably get, you know, a number that might be slightly larger than what I did. But you take a reasonable number of cross sections and you average them to get the, the lot width. And the separate parcel, even though it goes to the center line, you know, it's not part of this lot. It really isn't. It could, it's under the same ownership, but it's clearly not part of the same lot. You have a dividing line clearly showing a delineation between the two parcels. And that's not uncommon, but that doesn't mean you get to count the, the sound side onto Pine Creek. This, what effectively is a, you know, 20 foot wide strip against, you know, a lot that's averaging almost 60 foot in width. So this is how I came up with the average lot width of being 58 feet, which is substantially larger than what the applicant's claim is. We also don't know how the applicant came up with the 49.97. Did they take one measurement, you know, along the center line of the road, one down at the mean high watermark on either side and average simply three readings? We don't know how they arrived at that value. And that's another aspect, you know, that if you're going to, you know, claim an average width, you've got to document it with a calculation of how you got to that particular width. And nothing was submitted on the plans to know how they came up with that number.
So Steve, can you just, just for the record and so that the record is complete, can you just briefly describe your education, training and experience?
Yeah, I have a bachelor of science in forestry from the University of New Hampshire in 1980. I started in 75 in the civil engineering program in New Hampshire and actually then went into forestry. But during that time, I guess it was probably the winter of 76, I started working for Mr. Fuller on a part time basis and worked for him basically during every vacation that I had. Because back then, that was our college spending money, was whatever we earned during our vacation times. And then I went back to work for him. I worked for another surveyor in 1980, Bill Riordan out of Brookfield, and went back to Mr. Fuller in January of 81 and stayed with him till 1988 on a full time basis.
And I did license, how long have you been a licensed professional surveyor in the state of Connecticut?
Well, I, I'm not a licensed surveyor in Connecticut. Experience, I was licensed as a PE in Connecticut back in 1988.
Okay. And you've been an engineer, a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut continuously since that day?
Yes, I have.
All right. Yeah.
Are you, is Mr. Trinkus's testimony as an expert with respect to surveying? Or is he presenting fact testimony based on his own analysis? I'm just
His testimony is based on his analysis of the drawing.
Okay, but I use, you're not submitting him as an expert in surveying.
No, I'm not.
No, if I may address the commissioner's comment, as part of a civil engineer, when we do subdivisions, I lay out the lots, I have to calculate lots areas, I have to calculate minimum width, et cetera, for compliance with zoning. So I understand how to do this work because I do it as part of my practice.
I understand. And in your analysis of the width size, you did not include the parcel that was on the, if I'm looking at the plans
On the creek side.
On the creek side, yes, thank you.
That is correct. I went from the center line of the larger parcel on Fairfield Beach Road and then headed south towards the mean high watermark.
Why did you not include the South Creek, the creek side?
Again, based on the experience I had in Reading with a very similar situation of a larger conforming parcel on one side of the road, where the title went to the center line and a nonconforming piece on the other side. It was deemed actually by a court case, it's a separate, the smaller parcel was a separate parcel. It could be in the same ownership, but it was a separately legal parcel. And therefore did not, you know, was not part of the larger one. And that same argument would apply here.
We don't have that in the record. My question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm having trouble hearing you.
My apologies. We don't, I assume we don't have that, what he's referring to in the record. So it's hard to really rely upon that. And, you know, he's not being brought as an expert. Because I, I suspect the reason they have 49 whatever is because they included the creekside. And I'm trying to, except for his experience in one issue, in one instance, I'm trying to figure out what the standard is and as to why he is, it's just the experience in the one court case, that it is what it is. But I suspect it's the surveyor who did this, and I, I can't see by looking at this here, was it the Huntington Company? Is that what I see?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they include the creekside for some reason.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would point out that section 31.2.21, referring to lot area in shape, says that no street or highway shall be included. And it also says later, all contributing portions of a lot for purposes of minimum lot area shall be contiguous, meaning that no contributing area of a lot shall be separated by noncontributing areas. Fairfield Beach Road does run through the middle. For whatever it's worth, I note that the town of Fairfield carries the piece across the street as as a separate, 1614 Fairfield Beach Road as a separate taxing parcel. I don't know that that, and I'm not going to claim that as being dispositive of this issue, but I, well, I should put that, I'm just stating that for the record.
That's fine, and that, it may or may not have import, I don't know the answer to that. But I can understand not including the state right of way. But if this is considered one parcel on the creek side and on the sound side, then indeed, your point about the tax successor is potentially probative. I don't know the answer, but if it's one lot, then I don't know why we're not including the creek side.
Well, I, first of all, I think it presents sort of an unworkable result in this instance. Because if you think about it, instead of the beach side being three times or four times the length of the creek side portion of the property, if it were the other way around, then you would call the average width of this lot something like 20, 25 feet. And you would have virtually no setbacks on either side of this, of the structure. And that just doesn't, it makes, it, it, it sort of makes no sense. I mean, the, the, if you look at the, the regulation, and I can call that up, you'll bear with me.
I drive down Fairfield Beach Road, I don't, there are times I don't think there's setback requirements there at all when I see these noises on top of each other.
Yeah, well. Give me one moment here. This is the here's the regulation. And it says
I thought you cited 31.2.21.
Oh, I have that as well. I have that right here.
Well, that's okay, whichever one you want, I just
I, I'm just saying that if you read the the side yard setback provisions in the Beach District Regulations, you'll see it's graduated based on the average width of the lot. And it's just sort of, to me, it sort of boggles common sense that you would use the, the 20 feet on the other side of the road for determining where a house should be sited on this portion of the lot. It, it just, it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And that, that other, that that other portion of the lot should be included in averaging. Because it really doesn't benefit those kinds of features that a commission must have had in mind when it said, if your lot is a certain width, you have to have, you know, certain setbacks in order to sort of create open space between properties. And so
Well, and that's fine. I mean, we go, we always go by, you know, start with the text of the regulations. And that's kind of what I wanted to know was, and you think it's 31.2.21. I think you cited earlier with respect to why not including, well, certainly not the road. I get that much, that makes sense, but not the creek side.
Correct. So
Okay, I see your point. Okay.
Now, this says, yeah, all right, so so in terms of, it's, so it's our position, certainly the so we'd stand on and it, once again, the site plan or the zoning location surveys, neither signed nor sealed. So once again, by its, by its express terms, it's not to be relied upon. So, so we've covered the setback issue. And I just want to highlight that at present on the site plan. And let me just call up back to the site plan. So going back to, this is the zoning location survey once again. And I think that one of the things my clients found objectionable is you can see the footprint here of the
We can't see what you're sharing.
Okay. Okay. Hopefully you can.
It's coming up.
You can see that at present, between 1601 Fairfield Beach Road and the subject property, the setback on this side is, right there is 5.1. And I'm referring to this point right here is 5.1. And this was the former wall of the old house right here. And I think what the applicant is And I think what the applicant is proposing to do is, so this is the house right here, the existing house on the property, this is the cottage that the applicant referred to. The applicant does not show on their site plan the correct location of my client's present home, and the wall of their home is somewhere in there, and it is fully zoning compliant as to setback. But what the applicant did is, I suspect in order to create a sound view for their cottage, they're moving their, the other structure all the way to this side of the property, adjacent to my client's property, so that they can open up this area, I guess, for a view of the sound from here. And I, and I think I had pointed out in the memo, and I haven't seen, and I should state for the record that I couldn't see, I haven't seen the materials that the applicant submitted. I had looked at the agenda, and I had also actually looked at the materials online for the commission, and I didn't see that the applicant had submitted other materials. So I haven't had an opportunity to see those. But I understand that he may have submitted this drawing. The applicant indicated that he had submitted this, so it may be the, when I say this, I mean the survey of, of my client's property. So maybe that is presently in the record, but I haven't seen that yet. So in any event, at present, the, the setback regulations refer to setbacks for the lot. So right at the moment, it's five point one on this side, it's five feet on this side. So the total setbacks for the lot are ten feet right now, is the cumulative setback for the lot, which is what the regulation refers to. So it's our testimony that, and our position, that in Mr. Trinkus's testimony, that the lot width is actually closer to fifty-eight feet, which means that the setbacks, the setback of this structure is inadequate. But even using the, once again, the applicant's method of calculation, depending on the location of mean high water, then even using the applicant's method, if there's a two-foot variance in mean high water is, is two feet further away from the structure, then it pushes their average lot width to fifty point oh one. And suddenly they now are not compliant on setbacks. Next on, the, we have a dispute, and I heard Mr. Went's comments, and we read the zoning regulations as requiring porches, decks, and all structures that are one foot or higher above the ground as being subject to the setback requirements pursuant to the zoning regulations. We read the regulation as referring to, if, once again, if there is no house existing on the property as of the date of adoption of the zoning regulations in nineteen eighty-nine, then there is this line that's shown, actually, it's actually shown on this site plan here. And, and here, it's the line between the Roseman House and the original house that was on my client's property, so it goes from here to here, and that would have been the limiter. But because this house here did exist on the date of adoption of the zoning regulations, we believe that the correct and fair wording of the regulation is that the structure can be no closer than the front wall of the building existing as of the date of adoption of these Beach District Regulations. It does not say the closest point of the front wall of the building existing as of the date of the adoption. So we don't believe that there is an ambiguity, we believe that it clearly says the face of the building. The applicant has chosen to exceed that. And we, for the reason stated in the memo, it doesn't meet the terms of, the terms and conditions of the zoning regulations, including specifically eleven point one point two. So we've talked about the hard standards so far, and we next get.
Tony Green.
Yeah.
Just, because I think I asked this of Mr. Went, and I just want to ask it of you as well. I think we have seen this issue and dispute arise before with how to calculate the setback for mean high tide for the closest point versus what you said. And I think you might have actually been presenting in the, in the opposition to that. Is that, do you remember, my applicant saying that, I remember what, it's obviously Fairfield Beach Road. I don't remember what it was, but do you remember having this issue? This dispute in a previous application?
I had this dispute, I was tangentially involved in, I can't remember the address, but it's out near the end of Fairfield Beach Road where there's kind of a dog leg in the beach. And I believe that's on appeal now. I can't remember the names of the property owners, but I was not, that was a situation where I was. I represented the, one of the neighboring property owners, but I didn't, I don't believe I appeared before the commission on that, or I can't recall that.
And now you may not have, I just, and I think Mr. Went confirmed at least what I thought, that we've had this issue as to how to calculate the setback for mean high tide that you just outlined, or is at least that outlined an issue.
I think, I believe that Attorney Fallon represented the developer of that property. We had tried to broker a resolution, I represented Mr. LaFredo, and I can't remember the address of his property, but we, I don't believe, and I can't state this with certainty.
That's okay.
I don't believe that I appeared before the commission on it. I believe that we had, once the settlement had failed, I think that Attorney Fallon represented the property, the developer of that property.
Thank you, I just wanted to see if that job did any.
Yeah, so what I just wanted to do then is speak to the sort of, I was involved in a case in Trumbull called Saint Joseph's High School versus Trumbull Planning and Zoning Commission, and we went to the appellate court in that case. And the issue in that case was whether the so-called soft standards, character, impact on neighborhood, appropriate development, property values, traffic, those soft standards justify the denial of a special permit. That's an interesting issue, and in fact, there's a case in Fairfield that deals with that, with the same, with many of the same issues. But the court found in that case that the soft standards do apply, and that these standards in twenty-seven point four, the conditions for approval, do apply. And once again, twenty-seven point four point one speaks to location type, character and size of use in buildings and structures shall be in harmony with and conform to appropriate orderly development of the town and the neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage appropriate development and the use of adjacent property or imperious value. And what we did is, I provided the commission with, first of all, some drawings that show the potential impact of the of the, and let me see if I can just find. The banner is blocking my view here, but this is an analysis, and I don't know, did that drawing come up?
It looks like it is, it's up.
Okay, so this drawing shows a perspective, architecturally drawn perspective of, from my client's home. And this structure here is the existing house on the property. And this is the view from the first floor balcony. This is the view from the master bedroom of the existing house, and then from the upper attic deck. And you can see the views to the east of Long Island Sound. And then there's an analysis and a drawing done that shows the proposed. And this shows the proposed structure and from the first floor balcony, from the bedroom, and from the upper deck. And so by virtue of this being moved forward and where it's being proposed to be positioned by the applicant, it substantially blocks the view from a bedroom, it substantially blocks the view to the east from the first floor balcony, and so forth. We've provided you with a letter from Greg Lane, who's an appraiser. And this is in the record, and it indicates that the blocking the view to the east will have an adverse impact on property values for purposes of the standards that, and I can go through the letter more carefully, I think it may be. So I had asked Mr. Lane to discuss the potential ramifications of the new construction and evaluate the potential impact on the fair market value of the premises at sixteen twenty-three of the planned development at sixteen oh nine. And, and I don't think, you know, I, I hadn't initially been inclined to seek an expert, but I think it's important for the record. And and obviously, it's pretty obvious that an accepted theory in the industry is that the favorable feature is the view, if it were to be obstructed or altered in a manner which would minimize its uniqueness, or and obviously, we're referring to the Long Island Sound frontage and views. It would affect the marketability, marketability of the property. I thought, though, that for the record, I would have a licensed appraiser. Just, I would have that opinion in the record. And right at the moment, the property does enjoy water views and and that he's reviewed the application, and that there would be a reduction and would have a negative effect on the value of the property. So you have that in the record, the applicant did not offer anything on that in its case in chief, or indeed, offer anything to satisfy the twenty-seven point four standards. We had an interesting discussion in the office today, and really, all that the applicant has to do is, is move this building back about four feet. Like, maybe. And arguably, it would eliminate these issues, and I don't know that it would significantly impact the applicant's value at all. And, you know, I suppose if the applicant were to move the house slightly further away from my client's property and move it back four feet, or reduce the size of a portion of its deck, then the applicant basically can proceed. And, but as it is, the applicant is impeding and impairing the view, he is impacting the value. He has moved the structure dramatically closer to the property line with my client's property. Once again, it's our opinion that, in a, in a manner that violates the zoning regulations, and I know that you'll do your analysis on that. Let me just see.
So, Tony Green, we have, it's nine fifty-six. Are you, are you close to wrapping up, or do you have more?
I have just a couple more things. I, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to see what the applicant had submitted, so I suppose.
And that's kind of where I want to head is next is between supplemental, the applicant's supplemental material. And Tony Green, you said that you had submitted these things, I just don't remember seeing the letter or some things that you had submitted in the record.
Yeah, admittedly, I submitted these today, and I had.
Let's, I, I guessed as much, but I just, Mr. Went, do we have what Attorney Green has been?
No, it came in late this afternoon, we sent you an email link with the same email. It was on the same email that, that confirmed the withdrawal, the Fairfield U application. I attached the link to what we posted. But I just wanted to comment quickly, the, the material that was supplemented by Mr. Sargent is largely copies of surveys of Mr. Green's clients. So it really wasn't much material other than just stuff that came out of the ZBA record and was the as-built survey of Mr. Green's clients. So it really wasn't anything substantial.
And I, and I quarrel with that, I just haven't seen it, so.
But I, I can't help but make this comment in rebuttal, Mr. Chairman, in, in all due respect to all parties. We, we had nearly an hour testimony talking about the infirmity of this application with respect to certain aspects of the regulations, but suddenly that is all cured. If the applicant moves his building four feet closer to the, to the street, and somehow that magically is going to fix all the infirmities of the lot width and other aspects of the application that Mr. Green just outlined. I, I've got some response to those, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the regulations, and if you want to continue in hearing, that, that, that's fine.
Well, obviously, we can, obviously, we're continuing it, because we're coming up on.
Can I just, I just respond briefly to a comment Mr. Wetmaid?
If it's brief, but I, I.
I'll withhold that, and I, I can respond to that. I'll hold on.
Here's my point. I assume regardless of what it is, even if it's public record stuff, you know, Mr. Green hasn't reviewed some things. Mr. Sergeant, I assume you haven't had a chance to see Mr. Green's documents with any detail, because we all just got it this afternoon. We're not going to finish today, I'd like to keep public comment open, because I think that, A, Mr. Green is not done. There may be other public comment that needs to be, but it also gives us some flexibility as moving forward, if you want, if you, Mr. Sergeant, want to submit additional materials before the next hearing, that would need to be done in advance, so Mr. Green has a chance to review them. But we're definitely going to keep this, excuse me, this hearing open at this point.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, can I just make one comment, because I just don't want to leave the record as it is? Just one sentence.
Go ahead.
It is not the position of my clients that the applicant can't develop a second house on the applicant's property, and that's the critical point.
Mr. Chairman, question for you? Am I going to have an opportunity to speak at the next meeting?
Yeah, so Mr. Sergeant, the next, after the public comment, the applicant, i.e. you, have, has a chance to rebuttal. So you will have a chance, and you should take the time to review what was done and what was said and presented by Mr. Green to present a rebuttal, you of course can reach out to anybody, an attorney or staff for anything you'd like, but you will have a chance for rebuttal.
I appreciate that, because those comments were outrageous and actually legally not founded. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity to speak to the commission next time.
And Mr. Chairman.
Let's take, let's take time to, you know, button up anything that needs to be made.
Chairman, let me ask one question.
Oh, yeah, let me just say, you know, somewhat of an olive branch has been extended, maybe it's worth talking to Mr. Green, Attorney Green, Mr. Sergeant. I'll leave that to you, though, in your discretion, Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I just, if the, the parties could address whether under our regulations or case law, what the definition of a lot is for purposes of this application at our next hearing.
Yeah, because we are going through a lot of technical things.
I can, I can address that at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman. I, I will say, with respect to Mr. Trinkus's testimony, if we are now going to consider the creek side lots to be separate parcels, then I'm going to have to reappear before the Board of Assessment Appeals and explain myself, because I've appeared before them many times to ensure them that those lots are not separate buildable lots. But I, I can respond to several of the things that came up at the next.
I suspect, I suspect the commission's going to have questions for staff, this is very technical. So, as I said previously with the A three U G application, there's a challenge to us as commissioners do some homework on our end, and let's get some questions if we want them. This is very technical, a little more technical than we're used to, but, you know, let's, we've got whatever, how many weeks, two weeks at least, to dive into this a little bit more. But again, I note somewhat of an olive branch has been extended for maybe the parties to discuss offline. But that is, of course, in their own discretion.
Happy to do it, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you.
So. Attorney Green, can you please stop sharing your screen?
Sure.
Um, it's tunnel two, unless there's anything, uh, any other major issues or questions, I'm going to turn. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing for, well, I'm not closing the hearing. I've closed, keeping the meeting, hearing open for this application, but ending the meeting.
Is there any indication as to when this will be continued?
Uh, the next meeting is April the twelfth, three weeks from this evening.
Thank you.
If there's, we would need to extend it beyond that. We can discuss it, but I, I don't see a reason here unless we can't, um, if anybody has information that they want to submit that would extend beyond that date, please let me know. But our next meeting would be three weeks from tonight, April the twelfth.